Good evening. The District 2 08 Board of Education will come to order. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Nardi, roll call.
Here.
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 We do have recognitions this evening. Dr. Freitas.
Good evening, Honorable Board Members of District 208. This is one of my favorite parts that I'm sure the committee will enjoy where we get to recognize our outstanding student athletes. I would like to recognize first our boys' swimming and diving team. Congratulations to the boys' swimming and diving team on winning the 2024 sectional meet at York High School. And also congratulations to Coach Mike Lorich on winning the 2024 sectional Coach of the Year. Now, we would like to recognize our state qualifying athletes. Please come up when we call your name. For the 200-yard medley relay, our state qualifiers were Lucas Heinrich.
It's not a pool, Lucas. You're gonna have to turn.
Alex Rades.
Hayden Mars.
Water pole.
For the 200-yard freestyle relay, our state qualifiers were William Callis, Hayden Mars, Aiden Pancros, for the 200-yard individual medley, our state qualifier was Cooper Mars.
Cooper Mars.
For the 50-yard freestyle, our state qualifier was Hayden Mars. For the 100-yard butterfly and the 100-yard breaststroke, our state qualifier was Drew Rosa. Drew placed ninth in the 100-yard breaststroke, breaking the previous school record with a time of 55.99, and placed 13th in the 100-yard butterfly with a time of 49.94.
You got two boys.
Drew was also recognized with All-State honors. All right, let's get Drew All-Staters Hayden Mars and Cooper Mars. Let's give it up for them. Folks, I want everyone to know that this is a good problem to have when there's a delay because that means that kids are involved in multiple activities. So I couldn't be more proud of our athletes here today. Again, can we give it up for our boys' swimming and diving team? Coach Lorich?
How you doing? She wants me to take.
Yeah. Could we give it up for our head coach, Coach Mike Lorich?
Congratulations, Jones.
Hey, Coach, would you like to say a few words? Come on, Coach. You're here. You're here today.
Hello. You're not very good at this. I'd like to thank everybody for recognizing the boys. They did a great job this year. It was a fun season, probably one of the most fun seasons I've had in all the years that I've coached. They were not satisfied last year at the end of sectional meet and came back ready to do the job, getting relays qualified, individuals qualifying, people swimming on Saturday for finals. And as you can see, as he said, 90% of our guys are like three sports athletes, which is just says a lot for their commitment to the sports that they participate in in this school as well. But thank you.
Thanks, Coach.
I'd also like to recognize our Darwin Coach, Ms. Amy Phillips. Ms. Phillips? And Nate, you're not here, right, Nate? Beautiful. Thank you. Now, we would like to recognize our boys' wrestling program. Continuing our recognitions, when you hear your name, please come on up. Congratulations to Ethan Rivas.
He's outside, right? There he is. Come on, Ethan. Come on up.
State qualifier Joshua Gonzalez and state qualifier and state runner-up at 113 pounds Edgar Mosquera. Congratulations to the boys' wrestling team on qualifying for the IHSA Dual Team State Tournament for the third time in five years and earning top eight honors in Class 2A. Congratulations to the following wrestlers. If you hear your name, wrestlers, please join your teammates. Matt Elsie, Avery Simpkinski, Max Strum, Jaden Tulian, Tony Lombardo, Nick O'Connor.
Slide down, boys.
Guys, you wanna scoot over? Aiden Hernandez, Aiden Higgins, and Julian Espinoza. So, folks, here we have individual state qualifiers and our dual-team state qualifying teams. Let's give it up. And of course, our head coach, let's give it up to Coach Nate Kirby.
Maybe make some minds.
Don't stretch out. Come down in the hallway to give him a chance.
Bring it in, boys. Get in tight.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Coach Kirby, would you like to say a few words? Come on up, Coach. Come on up.
So, first off, I just want to say thank you to the Board of Education, the administration, the athletic department, faculty, staff, for all the support for the program. We couldn't have done it without all that support. And, you know, while the meeting the challenges that I set for the team every week and the kids coming to work and pushing themselves and believing that they can do it, you know, it really shows what you can do when you believe in your abilities and you work hard for it. 10 returning starters for next year, so nothing but setting higher goals and hoping to meet them for years to come. So, thank you.
Girls' wrestling. Congratulations to Eleanor Affai for qualifying for the girls' wrestling state meet for the third time in a row. And also congratulations to our girls' wrestling coach, Coach Dan Veer. Varsity Palms. Congratulations to the varsity competitive palms team on placing third in the AAA Jazz Division at the 2024 Illinois Dream Team Drill Team Association State Finals. When I call your name, please come on up.
Don't come up now.
Alexa Cavalieri, come on up. And May Jamerson. And head coach Tia Sherman.
Good job, guys.
Good job, girls.
Coach Sherman, you have...
Coach Sherman, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much for all the support and the recognition tonight. As you can see, these girls are go-getters as they walked right up here quickly. We had an awesome season, so much success at that state competition. Not only did they take third place, we also had sophomores Sophia Miller was nominated as a rising star, which is just special recognition from a floor judge that thought she really did an outstanding job. And all 16 members of the team earned all academic achievement awards, which is quite an accomplishment. So it was a great day, and we've had an amazing season, and we thank you for the support.
Thank you, Coach. RBTV Spirit Showdown winners. Congratulations to RBTV on creating the winning video for the Class 3A/4A IHSA Student Section and Spirit Showdown. Your video embodied the spirit of RB and showed how excellent our school is on a statewide level. When you hear your name, please come on up. Madison Lennon, Kayla Tulian, and our RBTV teacher, Mr. Matt Hodren.
Squeeze in a little bit.
All right, thank you.
Okay, let's give it up for RBTV. Mr. Hodren, you've been invited to the mic. Would you like to share a few words?
Thank you. I promise I won't cry, but I might. I want to thank the students. Obviously, they were amazing. They've been amazing since I've gotten here, in particular Jenny and Michaela. Coming here, you know, from a different place, it's scary, but having students like them step up, it's been a lifesaver. But I just, I'm sad because they're seniors and they won't be here in a couple of months. But I'm blessed to have had them in my life, and I love them and I love this whole RBTV family. It's been fantastic, so thank you.
Congratulations to the chess team on qualifying for the state meet for the 18th consecutive year. On the first board, we have junior David Guglielmo. On the second board, we have senior Quinton Rona. On the third board, we have freshman Alex Perez. On the fourth board, we have junior Nate Smolarek. On the fifth board, we have junior Joey Duff. On the sixth board, we have freshman Vittorio Ciaka. On the seventh board, we have senior Joe Hiltshire. On the eighth board, we have junior Dylan Zek, who, by the way, also earned All-State honors. On the ninth board, we had junior Mateo Gonzalez. And on the 10th board, we have freshman Eli Halliwell. And we'd like to congratulate our coach, Mr. Dave Monty.
Hold up here. Thank you.
Dr. Freitas, before you go on to teachers, do you have more athletes? I think you missed Stefan.
Yes. And last but not least, boys' basketball. We would like to recognize our two-time All-State Basketball Player, Stefan Sisic. Stefan? Congratulations to AP English Language and Composition Teacher, Mr. Dan O'Rourke, who was invited to the International AP Workshop at the American University of Sharjah in the United Arab Emirates. Mr. O'Rourke led AP Workshop sessions for 14 AP English Language teachers from across the world in a two-day workshop. Over two days, Mr. O'Rourke provided an in-depth review of rhetorical analysis, reading and analysis strategies, and valuable resources for teachers to be more prepared for the exam. As an AP Language Question Leader, Mr. O'Rourke was able to provide insight on how the exams are scored and cater the workshop to the exam prompts. Let's give it up for Mr. Dan O'Rourke.
I'll take a picture, Dan, and you say a few words, please.
Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you very much for your support. It was a great experience. The people who I did, the participants who were in my workshop in the United Arab Emirates were very appreciative, and it was just, it was all-around positive experience. So thank you for your support. I wouldn't have been able to do it without you, so thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to Ms. Patty Sarkady on being selected as the 2024 Illinois National Educators Alliance Classroom Teacher of the Year. The Adia Educator of the Year Award honors educators who have made outstanding contribution towards integrating technology and education for Illinois schools and students. Ms. Sarkady has been a career technical educator at Riverside Brookfield High School for over 20 years. She currently teaches Business Communication 1 and 2, Marketing, Digital Design, Advanced Digital Design, and Game Design and Animation. Riverside Brookfield is incredibly proud of Ms. Sarkady and her achievements and is grateful to have her as a CTE Business and Technology Instructor.
Thank you. Take a picture with me so I'm not by myself. Thank you.
Would you like to share a few words? You can't leave yet. Not with that.
Thank you, Board, for the recognition. This is truly an honor to receive this award, but I honestly couldn't do it without the autonomy that you give me in the classroom, which my students are number one reason why I'm here, so thank you.
Madam President, that concludes our recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Freitas. For visitor comments this evening, we do have a sign-in sheet in the front. I'm going to read a small paragraph as you guys can come up and speak in the order in which you've signed in. "The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of the school district. There are two points in the meeting where visitor comments are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note, the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the Board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent." Thank you. Do we have anyone here for comment? I think we do. Please. If you just make sure that you're signing in, that'd be great, and tell us your name when you start.
Hi, my name is Lily Borkowitz. I'm a senior in the music department at RB and have been involved in the spring musicals, magical singers, and choir board throughout my high school experience. I'm here today to address my concerns for the future of the RB music program and its impact on my peers. When Ms. Montana was hired my sophomore year, it was clear that she was someone very special. I immediately knew that she was the kind of teacher who intended to build each of her students up in hopes of helping them to reach their full potential. I have always felt Ms. Montana's utmost belief in me as she has been a constant supporter in all of my endeavors, especially when I began the audition process for collegiate musical theater programs. This brings me to a very important talking point, which is the intense process of applying to college for performing arts. A handful of us in the RB music department have decided to pursue performance-related majors at the college level. I think I speak for all of us when I say that we have realized the process is a lot more complicated than most people might think. On top of each program accepting such a limited number of students each year, for my intended major of musical theater, it's around 10 to 20 kids. There is a whole artistic application that is required alongside the regular academic application. Perspective students for college music programs must first be accepted academically to the school before they can advance to the artistic/audition portion. I had to submit a portfolio of singing, acting, and dancing footage to pass a pre-screening audition at each school before being invited to an in-person callback. Essentially, we were all doing double the work of most seniors. Due to the large number of applicants combined with such a limited number of spots, future musical theater majors are encouraged to apply to around 30 schools in hopes of getting offers. And we did all of this while managing the stress of the senior year workload and extracurriculars. As you can imagine, this took an incredible amount of work, time, and resources far beyond what RB provides in order to have a positive outcome. The artistic side of the college application process is outside the realm of RB's counselors. As a result, my family had to seek external coaching services to help navigate this twofold application process. Now, I chose this major for a reason, because I knew that this was what I wanted to do despite the challenge, and I was able to do my own research to gauge what was required to apply to college in this unconventional way. But I've learned that aside from the music teacher's assistance, the rest of the school's ability to guide us through the college audition process was not at the level it needed to be. I'm aware that my chosen path is not as common as that of most students, but there are kids like me at RB now, and there will be more in the future. That is why we rely so heavily on the help of our music teachers to guide us through. They are key to our livelihood. They foster our passions while we are here and aid us in furthering those passions upon entering the real world. Although I am graduating this year, there are so many kids in the grades below me that are just as eager to pursue their love for music as I am. Ms. Montana, Mr. Baum, and Mr. Loeb are crucial parts of making these dreams attainable. I stand here with everyone today to ask that you expand the resources available to students like me who are working hard at following their dreams beyond high school and who need the expertise and guidance required to get to the next level. Our arts educators are everything to us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So if anybody else is speaking, I'll put my hand up at 30 seconds so that I don't interrupt you. That's why I just wrote it on the back of my paper, okay? I don't want to...
Hi. Hi, my name is Iris Williams, and I'm a sophomore here at RB. I've been involved in choir, the spring musicals, fall plays, jazz band, orchestras, RDE, and I'm one of the varsity palms. Since my first day at high school, I knew that the music department was a safe space, not just for me, but for hundreds of students who are involved in our talented program. My parents, both professional, full-time musicians, are very supportive of me and this program. We moved from Berwyn to Brookfield for RB's music department. And like hundreds of passionate young students, I too am disgusted at the miscommunication and treatment of this music department by the administration. As a high school and they're one of the most important cultural centers in the world, I expect our arts program to be fully supported and celebrated by this community. Yet, here we are again, asking for a modest investment into something much bigger than ourselves. Dr. Freitas always promotes us to be involved in joining clubs and activities here at RB. Yet, without three full-time music teachers, how can we expect those music activities to succeed? Ms. Montana has done tremendous work despite the fact that this administration does not support her work whatsoever. Mrs. Lindquist has repeatedly told us it's an issue because of enrollment and budget, but what I'm confused about is the surplus of money we allegedly have as a school. Where did that go? I'm unapologetically disappointed and will continue to be due to underlying motives and biases from the administration to the music department. Please consider the effects this will have on current and future students, and just do better. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Wesley Greco, and I'm a junior here at RB. When I was a freshman, I wasn't involved in music that much, but I was in the musical Chicago. This was the first time I met Ms. Montana. I was a freshman and was pretty quiet. The way Ms. Montana helped me with music from our performance of Chicago really helped me grow as a person and gave me so much joy and confidence when I was performing. I was in Greece, and also this year she trusted me with the lead role of Skye in Guys and Dolls. She has helped me grow so much over the past three years at RB. This year, when I got, this year I got really involved with music and joined chamber choir and a cappella, and the musical, of course. Without her, I would have never become a musician I am today. She makes such a positive impact on my entire choir class and wants the very best for us and from us. I can't see any other person be put in this position. With everything she has done here and for all the students in our music classes, as well as others in the a cappella group and her other clubs and the other students she serves, I don't understand why she doesn't get the benefits of being a full-time teacher. She continues to help me grow as a musician, fosters a friendly, inclusive environment in her classroom. Without here, without her, choir would not be the same. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Vittoria Gentile, and I'm a senior involved in the music department, including in choir, band, jazz band, the musical, a cappella, and their various boards. Last week on March 5th, the RB bands had our winter concert, where the band students from Hauser also came to perform. Both RB and Hauser had three bands perform at the concert, and without fail, each Hauser band had close to double the amount of students perform at this concert than every band from RB. Only now are we finally able to see the numbers and involvement in music start to heal from the years COVID-19 had taken such a huge toll on our music department. If this trend of reducing staff positions for our music program continues, within the next few years, our current teachers with their current positions will become overwhelmed and stretched thinner than they already are. Cutting and reducing staff positions should reflect the students of the future, which are the students at the middle schools. That includes Essie Gross and Kamarick and St. Mary's and other schools that feed into RB. The amount of students that will be coming in to the freshman and sophomore classes are... are so much more than they are now, and our staff positions need to reflect that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Greco, and I'm an alumna of RBHS. I have four children, two who graduated from here, and a son, Wes, who is a junior and a sixth grader at SC Gross. My three older children have been in choir in both high school and college, and my youngest plays both violin and trumpet. I'm a firm stakeholder in District 208 and have been for 50 years. Our community, all generations, my mom is here too, want music to be alive and well at this high school for years to come. Two-point-something, that is what this school has been at for music teachers for at least the past 10 years, and because of that something, our music program suffers. We need three full-time music teachers in this district, and you are the school board to make this happen. Don't let this opportunity pass you by. Even though the state of Illinois may consider and act as if music is an extra, it is not. Music is core for this community, the community you serve. It is one of the components that elevates RBHS. It makes people proud to be living here, knowing that our higher education is firmly rooted in the arts as well as the academics and the AP classes. Your school board goal, number four states, maintain responsible budgeting while investing in staff and programs directly affecting student outcomes. Staff is listed first. Your goal is to invest in staff. Ms. Montana is an investment you should make. She has proven herself here. She has made an impact on all her students and all those that are not her students but are involved in the extracurriculars she oversees. She is the face of our choir program to all the feeder schools, and she is the team member of the entire music program here. Invest in her. Invest in her talents. Invest in her and show that RBHS community supports and invest in music education. You also state that you wish to invest in programs that directly support student outcomes. Well, the outcomes of music and singing and orchestra is clearly seen in all that these students do in and for RB. In fact, I would venture to say that music offers the most publicity in positive ways for our school. Our teachers and students are in the Fourth of July parades, perform at the Veterans Day Assembly, marched in the Thanksgiving Day Parade, and made the front page of the Sun Times. They sing and play in our community holiday tree walks, tree walks and lightings, perform at at least three concerts for all to attend, put on an amazing musical, perform at all home football games and other sporting events, win awards at the state level, and march out of school, those students as they go to state meets and competitions. I'm sure I missed a few, but one of my favorites this year was seeing our marching band and drum major on the announcement that we were an exemplary status school. Music is core. With three-time full-time music teachers in the music department, we can maintain this, and with three full-time music teachers, we can reach even loftier goals and accomplish more student outcomes. I understand that the school board hires people who come up with the plans they think are in the best interest of the students here. However, you as the school board can show the community of stakeholders that want music to remain at a high level that you support it. Take the two-point-something and make it a whole number, like your goal states, invest in staff. Thank you.
Additional comments?
I wasn't planning on speaking, but I feel...
Please, come on, do, please, and sign up too.
Sign up here, okay. My name is Priscilla Gordy. My daughter is a freshman and is an amazing child, but she is very introverted, very studious, and I might get a little emotional. Over the past few years, I've seen her grow through music and through the arts. I don't think that she would be the child that she is today without it. When she signed up for high school, and we did all of her classes, because she was so focused on academia, that she did not take choir. She was in band, she's a trumpet player, and she was so concerned about making sure she got all of her academics in, that she was very sad and frustrated that she was going to miss out on choir. So we spent an entire weekend going through the entire handbook, all the classes, all the extracurriculars, all the requirements, just to make sure that she could get all of her AP classes for all four years and that she would be able to also take choir. I know that it seems like this is just talking about numbers, but it's not. You're talking about the emotional and mental well-being of children based on arts. That's what it does for them. It brings them out of their shell, and it makes them happy. People that get to be in community, it's their home. They find their people, because they finally find what fits for them. And it would be devastating, I know for my daughter, to know that a position was potentially taken away, or a person, as everyone's spoken about, would not continue to remain here because of a lack of full-time, and that that desire to bring someone else in wouldn't be there because they don't have full-time status. It would be devastating for my child. It would be devastating, I'm sure, for a lot of families, because this gives them their outlet. You think about a kid that's introverted and is scared to talk to people, but yet can go onstage in front of an entire audience and speak lines and sing and dance. That's magic, and it's not to be taken for granted. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do we have additional public comment at this point in the meeting? Okay. We're going to move on to our discussion information items, FOIA requests. I believe we have a couple of doctors.
Four FOIAs that were submitted.
Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, I'll give you a second.
We have one by Liz Busio regarding Class 9's caps and policy information. That response is included in your packet. Kristy Christowski from the Chicago Tribune, documents and information concerning Dallas Till, Shari Reed, Smart Pure Cure, commercial requests, any and all purchasing records from 11/20/23 through the current date. And then Susan Decker, number of students currently enrolled in culinary classes and number that would benefit from the renovation of a new kitchen, looking for the total of students enrolled in classes and currently utilize the industrial kitchen. Those responses are all included in your packet.
Okay. There were no comments or questions from anyone, I don't believe?
None on the FOIAs.
Okay, so moving on to district goals update.
District goals chart is included in the board packet. I would anticipate Dr. Freitas and his team, in the month of April, will provide an update to the board on, you know, as you see, some of the updates are ongoing or progressing. We're working in our committees, so we'll have an update either in April or May for the board on actual progress and things accomplished this year.
So we can set time at the April board for that? Okay. Is that good with everyone?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to additional discussion items. Does anyone on the board have a request to add an additional discussion item for later in our agenda? No? Seeing none, we're going to move on to reports. I don't think the essay is here tonight, Dr. Freitas.
Essay?
I do not see one.
Oh, okay.
Any essay offices?
Oh, but you did a report two weeks ago, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you. We'll see you in April. Superintendent's report?
Superintendent's report, I have one sentence, but let me just make sure I read.
How many, what pages? We are on Board Book 46.
Yes, it has the PDF.
Yeah, the PDF gets a little bit hard to navigate.
More or less, the Personnel Council met on February 29th to review the staffing report the board will have tonight. There were no updates from our last board meeting on February 27th. There are going to be multiple reports from the administration tonight that will provide the board significant information.
Thank you. Let's move on to the Assistant Superintendent's report.
Good evening. Tonight, I'll provide the Board of Education with financial information through the month of February, which represents 67% of our fiscal year. As always, I'll begin with the monthly summary report, which shows that the total operating revenue for the month was $3,221,168, with 89% of that from property tax, 9% from evidence-based funding, and 2% from local payments. The total operating expenditures for the month were $2,350,082, with 75% towards salary and benefits, 7% on special education tuition, and 7% on purchased services and other expenditures. The summary of revenue shows that the district has received 59.9% of our budgeted revenue for the year. This percent is higher than this time last year of 50.5%. And the summary of expenditure shows that the district has spent 67.3% of the budgeted expenditures for the year, which is tracking pretty similar to this time last fiscal year. As always, I've provided for the board the statement of revenue and expenditures for the month of February, both for the board accounts as well as the activity accounts. And then lastly, the other piece of information for the board is I've provided the budget calendar that I use to create the tentative and final budget for the upcoming 2024/2025 school year, also referred to as fiscal year '25. This is the same timeline that we followed from previous years. There's no changes. You can see it's quite a lengthy process, but wanted to make sure you were well aware as we begin the budget cycle.
Thank you. I don't think we had any questions submitted on the Dr. Montana's report. No? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to the principal's report. Do you want to take Dr. Freitas, the student advisor, at the top? Or how do you want to?
If that's okay, Madam President, yes, student advisors. Would you like to report out first, please?
Starting off our student advisory report with teaching and learning, March 11th, the start of fourth quarter. As we go into our last quarter, students keep up attendance for those senior examinations, stay on top of your grades, and be on time for class. But overall, a good start to the fourth quarter.
Moving to school culture in operations. Tuesday, March 5th and Thursday, March 7th, we had our band concert, which was March 5th, and then the choir orchestra concert on March 7th. The concerts went really well. We were honored to have the Hauser bands here on March 5th, and as Vidi mentioned earlier, tremendous sizes. And they're all extremely talented musicians, and I'm excited to come back and see them perform as part of the RB band. And with the orchestra choir concert, they decided to switch things up, and it provided for a really interesting turn on a choir concert. Monday, March 11th, yesterday, Paulina Carmona, a class of 23 alum and current Yale student, visited. I was not able to attend the meeting.
And former student advisor to the board.
Yes, current student advisor to the board as well. And she gave a perspective on what it was like applying to an Ivy League and the finances and the day-to-day life. I wasn't able to attend, but that's the general premise I got from what the meeting was. We also began our career and college week. All week, staff and students are encouraged to wear college, union, or military apparel. Yesterday, Monday, March 11th, teachers were encouraged to share college and career experiences during their second-hour classes. Today, Tuesday, March 12th, NAMI presented a healthy college habits presentation for seniors, as well as School Links had college and career searches for sophomores during first, second, third, and fourth periods. Tomorrow, March 13th, School Links will continue the college and career searches during fifth, sixth, and seventh periods. Thursday, March 14th, there is a mini-college fair in fourth and fifth period in the Commons area. And on Friday, March 15th, the Trades and Career Fair will be during second and third period in the East Gym. In the middle of the month, the federal government will begin processing FAFSA forms, and I would just like to touch a little bit on that. I'm just going to read directly from a notice that was sent out. "The federal government will not begin processing completed FAFSA applications until mid-March. During this time, students will not receive their FAFSA submission summary, which was previously known as the Student Aid Report, which outlines their federal grant and loan eligibility, as well as the Student Aid Index, which was formerly known as the Expected Family Contribution. Because of the delay, some schools are delaying the May 1st decision date to allow students more time to make educated decisions. And for more information regarding that, please refer to the news post titled 'FASTFAR Update for Senior Students' on the RBHS website, which was published February 23rd, 2024."
Thank you.
Looking forward to April, Friday, April 26th is prom. Prom will be held April 26th from 6:30 to 10:00 p.m. at the Oakbrook Hills Hilton Resort, located at 3500 Midwest Road, Oakbrook, Illinois. Students will be required to transport themselves to and from the venue. For students driving themselves, there is a waiver that needs to be approved. All school fees must be paid in full by March 27th to purchase a ticket online, and if a guest is an RB student, their fees must be paid prior to the purchase as well. Ticket sales begin April 2nd, and they run through April 16th, and that is both online through a link and in the business office. And for more information regarding prom, refer to the Prom 2024 Student Letter that was sent via email on Friday, March 1st.
Thank you. Lots of information.
And then for activities and athletics, in the month of March, on the March 12th, first match for girls soccer and first girls softball game, home at El Hurt. And then March 13th, first game for boys baseball. 14th, first match for the boys lacrosse and girls badminton. March 15th, first match for boys tennis. And then March 20th, first match for boys volleyball.
And I'd also like to give a shout out, we had a girls water polo team, that was a fun match over there, today, and then our girls lacrosse team, so very busy game. Thank you for that, Kayla.
Thank you very much. Dr. Freitas, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So for the month of March, you know, really quickly to review some graduation, some data, some projections. For our graduation rate, this year, we're scheduled to land at 93.7. Last year, we were 93.69, you know, very similar to our exemplary year. For freshmen on track, right now, we're projected to end the year at 98.4. Last year, we were 96.08. And for the five essential student participation rate, I actually checked it this morning, we're at 91%. Last year, around this time, we were 90%. The goal is 95%. So now, you know, now we're reaching out to the students that raps in, and we didn't complete it, to make sure that students' voice are heard, is heard. For school coaching operations, currently, we're on the way for the Illinois Science Assessment. Thank you to our testing directors, Mr. Mark Helgason, Ms. Beth Augustine, everybody that's helping, and to all of our science teachers, who've been doing a great job. On March 13th, tomorrow, we have our college planning tips for juniors, 6 to 7, in the auditorium. We have our Race and Equity Committee meeting on the 14th, 6:30 p.m. in Room 201. And spring break runs from the 22nd through April 1st, so we have a nice spring break coming up. In the month of April, we have, on the 16th, we have the PSAT and SAT grades 9 through 11, and seniors have a college career exploration day. It's not an off day. It's a time for them to visit and explore colleges and careers. For the month of March, on their activities in athletics, our spring sports have begun. The community is open and welcome to support our Bulldogs. You guys are in Central. And in April, the math, the math team will go to state at ISU. They finished second in the region, so can't wait to see the math team downstate in the month of April. And board members, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Quick question. So in prom, we're not doing the coach buses this year?
We haven't. We haven't done that for probably the last five years.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
The students sign a waiver?
Okay.
If that was maybe where your question might have been going.
Yeah, I mean, that was a big deal when they came in.
Okay. Okay. Dr. Freitas, do you want to?
You have a lot of staff here.
Yes, I would like to invite one of our interim assistant principals, the name of Mr. Tom Dolman, to present the athletic summary winter season. Thank you, Mr. Dolman, for joining us.
That's okay. Don't want to get too close. Good evening. First of all, I believe up on the board is the winter summary, and a lot of it's already been given to you for our recognition that we just had earlier, so I'll bypass a lot of those names, because those are obviously honored. Quickly, starting with the girls basketball team there, the record is on there. They were first-place conference champions, 6-0 in our last year in the Metro Suburban as we head into the Upstate Eight, and they lost in their regional final, and as you can see, plenty of all-academic and all-conference players there. The girls gymnastics, we had a 1-4 record on the varsity and 2-3 on the JV. The regional, they took fifth place, and they had a couple sectional qualifiers, which was nice, and they got to compete in the sectional. Again, athletics, all-conference and academic, kids are noted below there. Cheerleading, second... Cheerleading, second place in their conference meet. Had several other invitationals throughout the year, and it came in thirteen, in the sectional. And again, all the academic and all-conference people are listed there. Palms, we noted the team came in today. Coach Sherman's first place at the conference and also a third place at the state. So they have been doing a lot of cheering and palming at our different events, especially basketball and football. So that's been good. And you can see the enormous amount of all-academic athletes there. Girls wrestling has been growing in RB in the few years here. We had eleven girls competing this year. They had a five and two record. There was one state qualifier there that was mentioned earlier, and we had three girls that qualified for the sectional, not two. There was three there, they're listed. Boys basketball, they were varsity twenty-five and four, six and oh in the conference championship there. They lost in a heartbreaker in the championship regional over at Hinsdale Central. And all the lower levels there, as you can see, were conference champs again. So looking forward to going to the Upstate Eight and being competitive there. And you saw our all-state step on. Boys wrestling, again, a conference champion, nineteen and seven record. They were team champions to go and qualify for the dual state, which Dr. Freitas has already mentioned. And we had all the state qualifiers mentioned earlier, along with our runner-up player, person wrestler at one thirteen. Swimming, although they didn't win the conference, they had undefeated record during the season, came in second, but then had the outstanding meet at York for the sectional, and the whole team obviously went on to compete at the state meet and had, again, as you saw earlier, the records there. The other part of the report that was in the packet is the pay-to-play comparison for numbers over the last several years. Winter is pretty much a saturated time. Most of the sports are at their maximums, girls and boys basketball. They're typically at the forty, the forty, you know, one or two, up to forty-eight and forty-nine for the boys. So the numbers are played pretty much the same. There's only a couple percent up or down there over the years. So you won't see much change in the numbers. I think in the winter, the wrestling has moved their numbers up in the last few years and stayed there. That wrestling number does include boys and girls. In the future, maybe they'll be splitting that up as the teams start to grow and become more independent of each other. So basically, those are the numbers of, the number of contestants that we had and the results that they had. Any questions?
Tom, how are we doing in our transition for Upstate Eight?
Yeah, things are moving forward. Obviously, meetings have happened monthly with the Upstate Eight, so mostly the scheduling and the combination of maybe some of the changes to rules or some things that happen in the Upstate Eight that may be different for conference rules for the tournaments and things like that. But the schedules are being made. We're obviously plotting in those. And so our non-conference schedules will be quite different. We'll have much more of a conference schedule in many sports. And then the options that play other teams would be the ones left, which is a little bit less than we do now. Right now, we have to schedule a lot of non-conference because the conference was so small.
Okay. Any other question on athletics? Looking. Thank you for waiting. We appreciate that.
Mr. Dolman, thank you for your services here. I believe your hundred-and-twenty days will be up here in April.
I don't count numbers, so we'll see.
We want to thank you for stepping in and helping us out this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. I'd like to invite now Mr. Dave Mannan, Assistant Principal of Student Affairs, to go over the student handbook presentation. Mr. Mannan?
Okay, good evening, board.
Good evening.
Tonight, we're going to present out the summary and proposed changes for the twenty-four, twenty-five student handbook. This process was guided by student, parent, and staff survey responses, as well as discussions held within our student equity leadership team, our building leadership team, and within our board, with a board representative on this lock. Changes to the handbook are a direct result of these, or proposed changes to the handbook are a direct result of these discussions. Our first item on the report relates to the IHSA code for homeschool participation within RBHS athletics and activities. I will note that while this procedure has long been withstanding, this is the first time that we're going to include it within our handbook for transparency. Per the IHSA, students living within the District two oh eight boundaries are, and are homeschooled, are eligible to compete in all IHSA-sponsored activities and athletics, provided they meet the following criteria: that students are enrolled in five RBHS classes the semester before and during a student's competitive season, or in a program equivalent to five classes approved for credit at RBHS, and students must also pay the associated fees and ethical tuition. So that is something that we have been including. It's just an added, some added language into the handbook so that our homeschool students can understand our policy and procedure there.
That aligns directly with IHSA.
Correct.
So does that mean that, because, so a homeschool, a homeschool student could not participate in any sport?
As long as they're taking five courses that are approved, they can participate, but that is a requirement.
Would they have to physically be here to take those five courses?
No. If they're taking, like, if they're doing an online program, they have to get pre-approved by the administration.
Okay, so, so we do have something, I mean, we wax and weight. Sometimes there's many families that are homeschooling and, you know, they kind of opened up. But if they work with the school and they're in particular, like, approved online classes or that, they come to the school ahead of time.
I think we use program equivalent. Is that consistent language in the?
Correct.
Does that just say positive?
Yes. Yeah, I think, you know, best procedure for any homeschool student is to come to us first, let us know what sport activity they're going to be interested in playing, and then we can go through what their schedule looks like.
What about for some of our programs, like band or like some of our after-school programs?
So as long as it's not, it doesn't fall under IHSA, then they're fine to participate in those activities.
Okay. Dr. Skigis, did you get my questions?
I only had the one about the classes under six, under twenty.
No, but did you get my email? Because I had asked about the homeschool on Monday afternoon.
I did not get them.
Okay, all right. So that answers that question.
I sent out all the questions I received this morning.
Okay.
The email.
Yeah, I have a document, yeah, okay.
And this, again, this is just added language for transparency purposes.
Did he answer your question now, though? Were you satisfied?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. So, that's why I was.
So the board is where we support families, you know, to understand, and we guide them. So we support them in this process.
The next item is just a modification to the handbook language on under activity participation. And this is just clearing up the expectation that students who miss more than fifty percent of the school day, this includes students who take a mental health day, that's the added language there, will not be allowed to participate in any extracurricular activity or athletic program on that same day. So if they, you know, and this has been a procedure that we follow and have been following, but if a student is out for a couple periods and comes in, you know, that's fine, but more than fifty percent excludes them from participating in those activities. And since mental health day was a recent addition, we just added that into that procedure. The next item is, in addition to our excused absence language on page twenty-three in the handbook, proposed language includes a new item to allow for one excused day absence on a yearly basis for students to attend a civic event. Let me read that from the page here. The excused absence and is, should be defined as a civic event that would be an event sponsored by a not-for-profit organization or governmental entity that is open to the public. And civic events include but are not limited to artistic or cultural performances or educational gatherings that support the mission of a sponsoring not-for-profit organization.
So my question on this, was this a statutory change?
It was an amendment to the state code.
Okay.
And what they did there was just define what civic event is to their, to their definition, which is a little gray.
I was going to say, it puts some burden on the staff approving it, right?
Correct. So in researching what schools are doing, it's, it's pretty hard to narrow in on what that civic event means. But if you go through their definition of participating in a government, not-for-profit activity, related activity, as long as it meets that requirement, then they're okay to participate. And then what they would do is call and then provide that evidence, whether it's a program or hour sheet or what have you, or if they're working at, you know, a polling event or something like that.
So that was my question. So is this, do we otherwise allow for people to be poll watchers and volunteer there, or is this the category?
This is, this is the category that falls under now, but we have in previous years as well.
Okay, that's what I wanted to just clarify.
Something else that would fall here, being an election, Jeff, we've had students that are eighteen, you know, who would qualify.
But we're usually closed now on elections, right? Aren't we closed?
Only on national.
On the presidential.
Governor, governor, presidential, every two years.
But in the past, we've had students.
This is just clarifying that it's an excused absence versus the parent having to call in and that sort of thing.
And we'll add that under the bullet of our excuse category, rages. So similar to like a college visit, and so we just fall under that as a civic event. And we'll review this with our students as well, like during our handbook presentations at the end of the school year.
I would say the student advisors have any particular comments on this, because you're the ones going to see it. I think it'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, the next is just a minor addition under attendance procedures to include the early release email and direct phone number. We found that separating out the early release line and our attendance line has been beneficial to expedite the processing of those calls and those emails. And that's actually been updated in our website. We wanted to make this minor change in the handbook as well. The early release is just simply earlyrelease@rbhs208.net. And so any student that may be in attendance but leaving early for the day, parents can utilize that email right now and/or call the direct number, which is seven oh eight four four two nine oh nine oh. And that would be direct access to the early release line, different from the attendance line. If you still call the attendance line, that's fine. We'll get that. We're just trying to separate that out to expedite our process down in the office. The final proposed change includes added language pertaining to the use of artificial intelligence by students in our, in educational settings, which is found under our academic design and application procedures, and that's on page thirty-one. There's a lengthy paragraph that I included here. This is proposed language that a lot of schools are moving towards. There's a lot more to come with artificial intelligence. So this isn't a policy that the board needs to adopt or anything like that. This is just a procedure that our teachers can use when students submit schoolwork other than original thought, using AI technology. And basically, to summarize this, is that students may not use AI, including AI images, a voice generator, technology to violate school rules or school district policies in order to ensure academic integrity on tests and assignments, projects, papers, or other schoolwork. That all may be checked by AI contact detectors or approved by the classroom instructor. So it's just having some language in our handbook that gives you an overview of how to use AI technology. And when it comes down to it, this really is a guide for our teachers to use. And like we do with electronic policy, our teachers should be the ones that approve that, and they have been already. So that's really guided by what they do in the institutional leadership team and then filtering down to the classroom setting.
Okay, so this is a first read. If we have any additional questions, I guess we can talk about it tonight, or we just submit them and then we'll review it again in April. So thank you.
Yep. That's all the proposed changes at this point.
You addressed all the questions. I believe there were some, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, David.
Madam President, I would like to introduce now our Director of Special Education, Mr. Kevin Baldus.
Thought I heard a clamper two there, Kevin.
It's all right.
Might have heard one or two.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to present to the board and to the stakeholders the RB special education update for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. There's a few things that I wanted to discuss, obviously with staffing, about our student population, and also talk about programming and what that looks like here at RB for all of our kids that are in our special education department, working with our special education teachers and related service staff. Currently, right now, for this school year, we have fourteen point eight FTE dedicated to special education teachers and case managers. That also includes a point six that, thank you, that you allowed us to add due to an enrollment increase beginning of school year and into the school year in our life skills program, when we had some students move into RB. We have a two-point-oh transition teacher specialist. One is FTE and one is a, just a specialist. And then the one LANSI nurse that works within our department, primarily in our self-contained programming, and that I'll discuss later when I do the breakdown of our different most restricted environments into our least restricted environment programs that we house within our building. The total for students within our district is two-hundred-and-thirty-five students that are currently receiving special education services. That's a three percent increase from last school year. Of those two-hundred-and-thirty-five, twenty-eight are currently attending outplace educational settings, mostly within our, our community LRB school that we have created with LANSI and Alliance Township High School, which I'll discuss a little bit in a minute, at the end, sorry. And then there's twenty-one young adults that are in our transition program that is guided and taught by the two previous teachers and transition specialists. The first chart that I have up on the board is a breakdown of all two-hundred-and-thirty-five of our students that, the category where they qualify for special education services within our building, our district, our school. Our largest population is specific learning disability and works all the way down to the smallest group, which actually is one person with traumatic brain injury. It's the context of where our students are qualifying and the level of supports in which they need. The second chart is really an opportunity to break down what does those, those students, those kids look like within our building and what programming that they are, are involved in. The outplace students are, were removed from this chart as well as transitioned because they are not in our, our general education setting in the sense of freshman through maybe fourth or fifth year in Gen Ed or in self-contained programming. Of the, that break, that number breaks down to about one-hundred-and-eighty-six total students in special ed. Ninety percent of those students are in general education with special education support services, and then ten percent are, are about nineteen students that are in our self-contained special ed programming. Special ed, sorry, special ed, self-contained programming is primarily taught by a special education teacher with maybe a para inside that classroom. There is limits to the amount of enrollment those classes can have at one time within those programs. There are state guidelines that we follow, percentages by, I don't want to get too many details, but a maximum of seventeen students all the way down to a maximum of thirteen students in a self-contained, a special education class, a program that we offer here at RB. We will do also, within our general education setting as well, we do also comply with, attempt to comply with ratios that we want to make sure that we are sticking to. Special ed, let's talk about placement a little bit. Special education students are based through their programming at their IP meetings and through their IP team recommendations and testing and legal requirements of least restrictive environment. What that means is students who receive special education, special education services should be in some same general education classrooms as other students as much as possible. This principle guides each student's IP team to creation of a student's individual educational programming as part of every single IP meeting that we hold for each one of those two-hundred-and-thirty-five students. There's actually a page dedicated to least restricted environment within that document, that legal document, or then the part of that, that meeting. We often, with the self-contained programming, many of those students are in one program that I'll talk about in a second. But our goal is always to get these students involved in some kind of general education experience in their school day with that goal of, of, you know, really giving them the most authentic high school experience that we can. In some of those programs that, or classes we try to get them to, might be PE, foods, rock band, child development, choir, photo, ceramics, just to name a few. And we try to get those students into those classes with some kind of support, maybe a para support within those classes so they can access that. And those, because we want to get those kids into our building and integrate them into our building as much as possible as we can. And again, those students are represented in the chart in the orange, like, ten percent. And then some of the other things I'll discuss about, the, the blue section is going right into our, our program. Our most restricted environments here at RB is our life skills program and going into our, and core program. The kids that are in, students that are in those two programs is part of that ten percent. We do have some kids, because it's so individualized, that might flow into the life skills program and into core and back and forth, depending on maybe more access to the building, working on some individual school skills and our goals, whatever that might be determined by the IP team. Then we move into the blue area, the ninety percent of our kids that are in special education services are in. are in gen ed, so at least 80% of their school day. Some are in RIDE, which has been renamed this year for responsibility in developing excellence. It's a great opportunity to hear the voice of the kids in that program. They wanted a change to the title of that program and the RIDE program staff made that happen. Social thinking is also another self-contained class, but it's also embedded into our general education programming throughout the day. Study skills follow suit as well. Our least restricted environment when it comes to our building is our co-teaching model. It's the general education teacher with the special education teacher, teaching a class for students typically with SLD, maybe some of the ED kids are also in there, mixed in with that general education setting. And that's the basic makeup of our programming through our school day up until graduation or if they earn a certificate of completion, which then goes right into our transition program. If that's either after year four or year five for some of those students, it's really that the team has decided they are not ready to just go off and to live their life. We still have some things that we want to work on with them. Access to maybe a work sites, look, some of our kids in transition take colleges, courses at Triton. Some are more in self-contained setting still, whether they're learning some banking skills, shopping, planning for parties and events, things that we might do just naturally, they need that extra push and extra support so that they can be as independent as possible once they leave our transition program. Extended school year is another program that we offer, again, for most of those students that fall within that orange category, that the IP team determines that we don't want to allow them to have regression of skills over the summer. They've worked so hard and gained so many skills that if they're away from us for two and a half months, then when they come back to us, we're going to have to rebuild some of those things all over again. And then we want to really, if the team decides that ESY is the way to go, to make sure that they don't minimize the amount of learning loss, is that they get embedded into the ESY program. As I mentioned before, some of our outplace students that attend LRB, be over half of our students probably are at LRB that are outplaced for multiple different reasons, but they just are found not to be successful in our building, need a more intensive or more restricted environment to hopefully learn the skills, implement some strategies through whatever related services or academics so that we can reintegrate them into, back into RB at some point. That's always the goal, is reintegration. Gain the skills, gain the independence, so then let's bring them back into the least restricted environment, back into RB and reintegrate them. That's always the goal and a message from us to the families when students do get outplaced because that is a big life change and we need to respect that and just very transparent with that. Lastly, I want to just, our students in special ed, our RB, they're everywhere. They're in all, they're in clubs, activities, IHSA sports, special Olympics, groups, outings, in the work environment. They are everywhere and many of us don't even know it, but they're doing great things. I applaud our department because they're doing a great job with our students.
Kevin, I think you addressed most of the questions that were submitted. There was one question. Can you speak to a little bit? We've had conversations with the board and one of our parent groups, like Buddy Choir. This has tried now to run for two years. We're having trouble getting attendance in that, enrollment in that class. Can you provide some insight on that?
Well, again, it's an opportunity that when students have their IP meeting, if we're going to try to place them into a general education setting, we're going to try to do that. It's listening to the voice of the student primarily. Do they want to take that course? Do the parents want to have them take that course? We do offer all those classes. It really is then driven by those expected outcomes if they want to be included in those courses. Always trying to give them access to the general education setting as much as possible. And if that's something that they want to do, then that's something that we make happen for them, if that's a desire from the parents.
So, I mean, so I'm hearing this, like, so more, if they can function or operate in the general choir classes, the first goal would be to place them in the general choir?
Yes, that's primarily what we've done in the past. We've had multiple years where we've had many, all Chinese kids, core kids be embedded and placed into the general education choir class with a para support so that they can perform if they choose or not perform, but just have access to the general education classroom.
And we're also doing it with our music classes like band and whatnot.
All, like the ones, we're doing that with foods. We're doing that with almost all the applied arts, ceramics, painting, all those have our kids. If that's an area they want to go into, I'm going to do my best, our case managers do our best to get them into those classes with support.
Okay.
Because, again, authentic high school experience.
So I have one question. I didn't submit it beforehand. I apologize. On the outplaced educational settings, it's showing a decrease of 2%. Do you know what the projection is at? That's obviously a costly area for us.
Yep. Those are, to be honest, it's very hard to project that because we might have instances where kids present some challenges to us in our building that deems us to try to put them, they're showing us they need more support than we can offer them. I think it's status quo is where we're at right now. I don't see any, hopefully no new outplacements. Again, it's such an extreme decision by the team.
It's a relatively small number, too. I'm just trying to understand if it's.
Yes, yes. And it's, we go through, I think the process, you go through problem solving at multiple levels in our building and through all administrator administrations and small teams, what interventions have we tried? Like, that is like the last resort that we go to before we try to exhaust every resource we have in our building before we outplace any student. It's a very intensive process.
Kevin and I keep a spreadsheet throughout the year where we track students. So we'll touch base in May and then I talk to him in June and July and August and September before we finalize the budget to try to get that number as accurate as possible. And then that number is always fluid throughout the year because you'll either have students that we try to transition back.
Yes.
Or we have students that we need to then, you know, move out. And so we try to build in a small number to account for that based upon, you know, past history of movement throughout the school year.
And I'm assuming you work with the feeder schools in that process as well?
Yeah, so part of the eighth grade transition meetings that I have every year with all of our incoming kids with IPs, even the outplaced kids. Is there something we can offer that maybe the junior high or feeder school hasn't done yet, so then maybe we can bring them in? So it's, I do sit in all those meetings with the feeder schools.
And Mr. Baldus, I just want to thank you, you know, our case managers, special education teachers and counselors for always looking at a certain student within before considering outplacement, you know, because we have a lot of resources. And thank you for being direct with that and always.
All them in our great team.
Right now, we're at 28, 28 outplaces, is what I'm reading right?
Yep.
Is that, is that at our center? Like, don't we have a school?
LRV, yep. The one I mentioned, yes. So a majority of those students are at LRV.
Not all 28, but majority.
Yeah. I want to thank you for the report. I thought it was really nicely done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
I think I'm staying with.
Oh, another chair.
Yep.
Give them the hallway. That's your go-to spot.
I don't get it.
All right, so I miss, Miss Lindquist gets set up. You know, traditionally, this is the staffing report for the board. Again, this is just a general staffing report provided to the board. The board saw their staffing projections in November based on enrollment projections. Then the students pick classes. Miss Lindquist will go through the process. It's all laid out in the memo that's attached to the board's report. Historically, this report is normally about three or four pages. Of those three or four pages, the only board action that is required tonight is for classes that are under 20. There's a specific board policy that identifies classes under 20 need to have board approval. So that list will be presented during this report. You can ask questions, have a discussion with the administrators. The action is later in the agenda. However, you know, based on some of our reports from parent groups, the board had some additional requests. So this page, this report has grown to like 15 pages so that there are plenty of charts and information to break down student enrollment of various courses and classes and historical staffing summaries. So it will take a little longer tonight, but it was, a lot of it was requested from the board to make sure we're being completely transparent. And I will turn that over to Ms., Dr. Freitas, Miss Lindquist, Miss Augustine and Mr. Baldus.
So before I start, Dr. Skengas mentioned that the report is a little longer than normal. Are there any board members who would prefer a paper copy?
I'm going to say yes, please.
Because I have one. I am those, I am that person.
I see the binder clip and I.
Right? I am that person. Is there anybody else who would like one?
I would, too.
I brought my own because it was long.
Oh, perfect.
I'll take one.
Okay.
If possible, could I get one as well?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got one, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Good day, Michael.
Is that today to do?
Mary Ann updated it today. It was an email sent down. Do I have to just?
I printed it today, but.
One more chart was requested.
Become quite good at the chart making. So as Dr. Skengas mentioned, we are here to present on staffing for the 24-25 school year. Before I get into the charts and data that are included in this report, I'm going to go through some of the finer points from the memo that precedes the report in your packet. First, I'm going to start by saying that our target FTE for next year, the 24-25 school year, is, our target was to stay consistent at 111 FTE, which is where we are this current school year. The proposed FTE reflected on the summary sheet that I will get to in our report is 110.9, so 110.9 for 24-25. Within this report are 16 courses with enrollment under 20 for which we are asking board approval to run per Board of Education policy 6:31 on minimum course enrollment. There's a separate section of the report where we're going to specifically address those courses and that list, as well as some of the questions that came out of that list. So we'll get to that detail in just a bit. I should mention, as I'm going, we've had a lot of questions come from different meetings or different times. We're pretty confident that we have threaded the questions in throughout, but also don't hesitate to flag me down if there's something that you need to ask in the moment. In the memo for this report, you will see an overview of the sectioning and staffing process. I'm not going to read it to you because it's in front of you, but I want to highlight a couple of things. First, the sectioning and staffing process is facilitated by the building administration, specifically Dr. Freitas, myself, Beth Augustine, Kevin Baldus, and in collaboration with all four of our division heads. Another important process note regarding the timeline of our process is that all counselor meetings and course selection for students is completed by the end of January. That is so that the sectioning process can begin in February. This includes all incoming freshmen and all students with IEPs. The only students who would not have completed the course request or selection process by the end of January are those students who maybe have not registered for RB yet or whose IEP team meeting might have been delayed for conflicts of some kind with regard to the family because we need the family to be completely present in those meetings. Also in the process section of this memo, you'll see that courses that are not viable due to lack of enrollment are canceled in the first week of February in order to place students in their second choice elective. For 24-25, there were 20 classes that were not viable during the first run of sectioning. Each of these 20 classes had students request to take them, but there were not enough students to request approval to run those courses. These courses represent five different departments, applied arts, English, fine arts, social studies and wellness. Some of the classes that were canceled because they weren't viable include classes like digital literacy, human growth and development, speech, Bulldog Buddy Choir, global area studies and group fitness. This is the first of the new charts that we have added in your packet, so you will see it right after the memo, I believe. Mary Ann has updated it also on the screen, so it'll be on the screen behind me.
Do you want to go through the memo first so we're not bouncing back and forth? Or do you want to skip to that chart right now?
I think we skip to this chart right now. Because we're not talking about that canceled, those classes that are canceled after that first week of February.
That's the, okay.
We got it? Okay. Okay. So what you can see on this chart that Beth put together is the top chart represents classes that had student requests. So there were actually students that requested to be in the group of classes at the top. The second chart are classes that are on our books, but we did not have any students request to take those classes. So when you look down the list at the top, you can see, as I mentioned, several classes that have been canceled due to low enrollment. We have run human growth and development in the past. There were 16 kids that wanted it. That is not a responsible way to spend our FTE when we have other needs that we need to meet throughout. Speech communication is a class that is new for us out of the English department. We've been trying to run that for a couple of years. We haven't, we just haven't had the traction in there. Of course, I know that the hot topic is on Bulldog Buddy Choir, which you can see at the top of this list, which is alphabetical. What this list really does is give you an idea of what do the course requests look like in other classes that we have had to cancel historically at RB. So the highest class on here in terms of enrollment was 17 students who were looking to take our group fitness class, which is capped at 40. That's lower than even half the class size. And so that's a pretty good indicator that that's not a viable class and that's not a smart way to spend our FTE if we can use that in other places. So this was provided just to give a little bit of color to that concept of viability and how we look at viability in that first week.
What is the fall individual and dual activities?
PE classes.
Oh, that one is, too?
Yeah.
So a question on this, how often do you revisit this to see if a course should stay in the catalog in the upcoming year? Should we keep putting in speech communications if there is not enrollment?
That's a great question. We have taken out very few, we're very cautious to take offerings out of the curriculum guide because when we are student focused, there are times where, perfect example was electronics tech. Electronics tech had been in our curriculum guide since I got here.
Horace Miling, like.
Right? It's been there forever.
Twenty years.
And we left it because it was an offering and it was something that we knew we would eventually want to be able to offer. We hoped that we could offer it. And in the past, has it just been two years or three years?
I think this is the third year.
The third year. We've now grown that to where we have multiple sections of that class.
It's just the second year because David just created the curriculum.
Got it. So we're hesitant to pull something, like, for example, world percussion. We've never had any students, since in the nine years that I've been here, we've never had a student request to take world percussion. But it's there because there tends to be feelings about taking certain things out, whether they're in the department by teachers who have created those classes. And we really are trying to offer classes that students want, so we want to show them all the offerings we've had.
Sometimes it requires a title change. Sometimes they revisit the title, it becomes a little bit more attractive. The human growth and development, that's one that needs a.
A title change.
Title change and a revamping and looking at connecting it with some other pathways. So that's.
So while you list the caps on canceled classes, if they're over 20 or close to being a 20, that's what, something they could make the list?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to comment on this, you know, as we were kind of thinking about this, though. One of my fears, though, if we create such a large list of classes, then we begin to dilute the, you know, the offerings and all the different electives. You have so many classes that are not filling up because there's so many choices.
Correct.
I'm just wondering if it might not be, and again, that would be something you'd bring back to leadership, maybe it's time to, if it hasn't had any traction for three years, you kind of like put it on pause, you know? It's not offered until it can get, you know, kind of revamped or whatever, some new traction and then reintroduce it again or something, you know? Would that make more sense than just to have 300 offerings and we're having students, we're having three or four students take some of these things when really the class just really needs a revisiting of the curriculum?
So remind me, we look at the curriculum guide in the fall, correct? Maybe that's a, make an appropriate discussion to have in the fall about classes that have historically fallen into this.
You'd really want to have the divisionals start looking at their departments in the spring. So if there's any summer work that needs to be completed or, right, like, you don't just want to spring it in the fall right before course selection.
Yeah, so it's not really killed, it's just kind of in a balance, maybe until it's appropriate or you, we have more resources or, you know, we can really address it. But, I mean, that would be something maybe to consider among your leadership.
Just a brief question, clarification. When the word cap is used, that is like a target fill for the class? That is not the cap.
Not to exceed enrollment. Correct.
So that's why I was mentioning, Joe and me and Mr. Ruska might have been talking at the same time. While there's a cap listed on there, if the cap is over 20, we can still run a class. While there's a cap listed on there, if the cap is over 20, we can still run a class. And you'll see that tonight, and then there's...
You mean the enrollment?
The enrollment, I'm sorry, is over 20. It gives the administration the flexibility to still run the class.
And some of these, you know, when you look at the numbers or, you know, some of the higher ones, the number, the one that sticks out to me the most on that list is Human Growth and Development at 16 out of 30. That very easily could have been a class that I would have put on the list to ask for permission to run under 20 classes, under 20. But when you're asking for so many classes under 20, at some point, you have to stop. And so, this is a class, Human Growth and Development, at 16 out of 30. That's a viable class. Right. But we are trying to figure out how to spend FTE in other ways. So, that's a decision that we have to make. There are 16 kids that wanted that class. Maybe they wanted it for their career pathway. Maybe they wanted it because they want to go into childcare. And we have to tell those kids they can't take it. Even though it is over half of the enrollment, that's just, that's one of the tough decisions that we had to make to keep that off the list in favor of other offerings that we're requesting.
We also keep all of the data of the number of students that drop over the course of the year, and we keep the number of students that add. So, we see, is this a course that transfer students go to? Is it a course that students will drop? That's also a singleton, which, those of you who know about building a master schedule, you add another singleton to the class, to the master schedule. It's one that's even harder to add to. So, all of these things go into play when you're thinking about, when you're adding another class to the main picture.
Is there a priority over an academic class versus an elective? Do you like weight them or in your decision-making?
I mean, in my brain, yeah, I'm going to prioritize an intervention class, for sure. Those are the classes that are very typically under 20. We're going to try to make sure that if students start in a progression, that they can finish. So, when Patricia Reeves retired and we had the, like, the kids who started in the German courses and wanted to be able to finish their language, so we see that a lot. That helps us make a decision that we need to bring French, for example, because we have students who start in that. And we're starting to see that in some of our pathway courses, too. As we begin to work toward pathway endorsements, which are part of state code as of the class of 2027, we have to offer the avenues for a student to start in a pathway and continue in those courses along until they get to the end of those courses and whatever that means, whether it's a certificate or just the endorsement. So, we really pay attention to intervention courses and we pay attention to courses in a progression because we don't want to cut a student's legs off as they start in something and then we tell them, "Sorry, you can't finish that."
It can be tough to find nursing teachers as well, but if you had Human Growth and Development in the pathway of a nursing program, that can go through Triton, or, I'm sorry, not necessarily Triton, but Triton or other, then that class may have more viability.
And that's a pathway. The education and the nursing is one we really want to work on. And that's, to Beth's point, why Human Growth and Development might need a little bit of a name change and a curriculum change to really make that happen. So, I'm back on the memo. Also included in that cover memo is an explanation of the class size ratios that are used to determine the number of sections that we allocate to a course based on those student requests. So, we have three categories. We have classes that are 25 to 1. Those are lab classes. Hands-on, lab-based learning experiences taught in smaller classroom spaces where the tools and/or the supplies could potentially be harmful if, you know, perhaps they were used in a bigger size. So, all of our science classes go on the 25 to 1 lab sheet. Our intervention courses, as well as our core academic courses that are required for the SAT, like English and Math. We move then up a category to 30 to 1 classes. These are non-SAT-required courses and electives. So, in terms of required state requirement courses, Health, US Gov, US History, these are all required by the state of Illinois, but they're not tested explicitly on the SAT. Social Studies, Electives, Drivers Ed, Madrigal Singers, Drawing and Painting, those are courses that also fall within that 30 to 1. 40 to 1 classes are performance-based classes that are typically taught in larger capacity spaces. For example, our fieldhouses, our gyms, our bandroom, our choir room. These are our PE classes and our performance-based music classes like PE9, our marching bands, our orchestras, and our choirs. We have had, we've included several additional charts in this report, as Dr. Spink has mentioned. And the first is the kind of traditional summary FTE and class averages chart for the 24-25 school year. This report provides a comparison look at FTE overall and by department for the current school year and the next school year. The comparison view allows us to look at the changes in FTE by department as well as the class averages in all departments based on class size. On this summary chart, you will notice that required FTE is slated to be very similar next year with the exception of EL and EL support. This current year, we used a self-contained model for EL students where the students had a small-section self-contained EL math and EL science class. And what we heard back overwhelmingly from our EL coordinator and from students is that our students in those classes really wanted to be in larger classes with their English-speaking peers. They want, they appreciate the language support, and that's very helpful. But at the end of the day, they wanted to be in the classes with their peers. In some cases, some of the teachers that are teaching those classes would say, the kids would say, "Oh, you're, can we get out of this class?" And that's not to say there is anything bad happening, but they want to be included in that space.
If I could just ask, student voice is very important when it comes to programming. So, we listen, right? And year to year, it could be different. But students' voice matters, their opinion, and their development matters. So, this is why we made that decision.
So, next year, those students will be in a more sheltered environment with teachers that are EL-certified within their content areas, but then with classes with their English-speaking peers. One point of clarification I want to make sure I note, included in the summary chart is the change to Fine Arts FTE. The decrease of .7 FTE in Fine Arts represents a decrease in the visual arts with the music FTE for next year consistent with this current school year.
So, no reductions?
Correct, no reductions. Most notably, in the department summary section of this chart, you're going to see a continuation of the trend that has emerged in the last few years where Applied Arts FTE is increasing, and you're seeing Fine Arts FTE decrease as a result of shifting student requests. The charts I will go through later in this report will tease out very specifically the detail in those changes so the board and the community can see and understand those shifts that have been taking place in the student requests over the last handful of years. So, are there questions with that summary section of the report? That summary chart behind me?
No, I mean, you changed only negative 1/10. I mean, it's really quite constant overall.
I do have a question. And I know it's probably been answered, but there's been so much going out. The 25 to 1, 30 to 1, and 40 to 1, that's based on state policy? Or board policy, school policy? How do we arrive to those numbers?
Effective budgeting. 25, we saw safety issues with labs, with labs and our burners and lab tables and chemicals and dealing with tools. So, most of our lab stations and gas stations and safety stations in those lab classes, how we came to 25 to 1. And then, over time, from 2010, we were experiencing significant cuts and the district was at a $2 million deficit. And then, we slowly built back our core ACT/SAT classes that you are assessed on the state assessment.
So, these numbers were determined back, these ratios were established back in 2010?
Yeah, I would say starting around 2010, and then throughout, each year, we lowered another class. So, we took the freshman, all the freshman courses in math, science, and English, or math and English, excuse me. And then, each year after that, we added. So, I mean, it was a process from probably 2011 through 2015 to lower core classes.
Thank you.
I would say there's been considerable conversation among the department chairs using current pedagogy. It's not only a budget number, but like the core courses, especially the freshman math and reading. And you can ask Kylie about that. Among the department chairs in their department meetings, there is conversation of what is best practice in teaching. That also goes into these numbers.
Thank you.
I think, and I've said this before, I do think on that note that the ratio, right? The 40 to 1 is the one that jumps off the page, right? But I think the one that, you can see what the actual ratio is despite that cap. And yet, that's an important just point that we're not at the 40.
I was just curious because it's been asked multiple times, and I don't think I had ever heard a very clear answer. So, thank you, Dr. Spink.
No, I guess, I guess my thought was, I don't know why we, because we haven't hit that 40. It's more like 35. We're always within that 35.
Thank you.
It's almost a...
Usually, you're going lower than that.
Yeah.
I have some teacher friends in other schools that didn't even know if those class sizes were staying.
Oh, right. I taught for seven years. Yes, just curious where we were at here. Thank you.
Of course.
What's your next chart?
So, I'm going to turn it over to Beth now so she can go over the next chart.
Yep, so tonight, we are presenting the board with 16 classes with under 20 students for the next school year, and we are asking the board to approve these classes. As you review the list, you should note that eight departments are represented: Applied Arts, Fine Arts, English, Math, Science, Social Studies, and World Language within these 16 classes. And there was a question submitted by a board member kind of questioning why we were submitting 16 classes. This is higher than usual. And so, we have yet another chart to provide to give you a little historical data as to what these classes typically have been and why we have been asking for board approval.
So, we've certainly seen ebbs and flows. And the next chart is just a five-year snapshot with next school year, this current school year, and three cast years of data. We have gone back and forth. This is definitely the highest year. You're going to certainly see this. In the chart where I tried to capture, so you can see the numbers of classes that we're running, and I also tried to categorize what kinds of classes those are so that you can kind of see, I provide a list on the next page, but, so you can sort of see how those classes fall into categories: Intervention, Language, Music, Pathways, and Other. We have a longstanding history, as I mentioned, of running intervention courses under 20, and we continue to bring those to the board. Our pre-algebra classes, our reading classes, intervention classes that are meant to be smaller to help support those students who have the highest needs. Language classes have also been a very typical request for us when we have had, at least in my tenure here with German and with French. We've always had high numbers in Spanish, but our German and our French offerings have been lower, and we have wanted to maintain the status as the kind of school who offers multiple languages to students. Pathway courses are courses where a student has maybe gone all the way through the pathway, and they often earn endorsements, certificates, and dual credit along the way. We are actually very excited that next year is the first year, as I know the teachers are, that we have been able to offer Advanced Digital Design Graphic Arts. That's a whole class. It's just a very wordy class. And Honors Advanced Food Service as standalone classes. Those are classes that have typically been taught within another class, and our teacher of that other class has had to differentiate and teach two subjects at once. The same way, for example, when you see on the request for board approval, we have an Honors French III and an AP French class running together. So, differentiating instruction is what our teachers do. That's the name of the game always because we have different levels in all of our classes. But in those classes where we've put students together in two separate classes with those pathway courses, next year is the first year that we're going to have a couple of standalones. And that's a pretty big deal for us. There's a category for music courses. Some of those courses over the course of this, the life of this chart, are the AP Music Theory courses every other year. Chamber Choir, Honors Chamber Orchestra have been on that list at various points within the last five sectioning seasons. And then, the other category includes some kind of outlier AP courses outside of music and language. AP European History is one that comes to mind that has been on this list before. AP Spanish Literature has been on this list before. And we have also included in the other category some of the course offerings that have been proposed and approved in the last couple of years to really diversify our course offerings, Latin American History being one of those courses. So, on the back of the actual chart where you can see the historical patterns of how many courses we've brought for your approval, you can see those courses listed by year so that you can see which courses we are listing, we're coming to you for each year. We're seeing a growth, I think, for a couple of reasons. You see a little bit of a growth for next year in intervention courses. You see, language courses are pretty static. We've really been talking about French and German for the last nine years. Our pathway courses are new. Other represents some of our new diversified offerings. And then, we have, over the last handful of years, we have come to the board to request permission to continue running music courses under 20.
So, I have a lot of concerns with this list.
What age should we pull up on the chart before you start?
On the under 20.
To Mary Ann, that would be 85.
So, do you have, you know, and the reason why we, you know, we have the under 20 is so that we can retain all our, you know, after-school opportunities and our wide variety of electives. We've held on to that. But is there a minimum? I mean, like, the honors, there's seven. Could that go down to three? Would we be running a section with three?
Well, so, it's a singleton. So, it's going to be a class that's going to get placed first. So, everyone will get in. Can't control if someone drops.
And that's a progressive class, right? So, these kids might want to be...
These are the kids that are going all the way through French to that top level.
And we couldn't combine that with French III?
It is combined.
It is combined.
Well, you've got French III for 15, but then you've got Honors French III, AP French for seven.
The 15, that should be a French II.
That should be a II.
Right?
Is it?
No, it's Honors French versus French III.
It's French III, and then there's Honors French.
Oh, okay, got it. Got it.
Got it. There you go. French IV, AP, French IV and AP.
So, those kids are on their last.
Yes, Honors French IV and AP. Yes, that's where the, yes.
That's a combined class.
Yes. And it's combined this year as well, this current school year.
May I add? I appreciate the chart that you presented, and I appreciate the categories. So, Intervention, Language, Music, Pathway, and Other. However, I think there is another way of looking at those classes where we could say eight of them are advanced AP or honors, which directly affect our exemplary rating for our intervention, which we have to approve, right? Because we need them. And then, the four other, it's a stretch, but they could fall under our DEI category. So, on my end, I don't see why we would have a problem approving all of these classes, even though they're below the cap. I just had to get that out there. Thank you.
I just, I see some extra electives that seem like electives that I just, I think are pulling us away from the intention of bringing under 20. I mean, we just said the one class that's almost equal number to some of the extra electives here that could possibly be a pathway for nursing or CNA, we didn't use. And that is a career pathway. That is, that is something that, one of our goals.
But I think that the plan is to revamp that.
The plan to regr, right. Do we have a limit on this that if they fall below a certain number, they wouldn't run?
We have not. The board usually approves it, we run it. This is, so this clarifies the question and some of the questions that came from music sponsors before, but just in general over, this is where the board supports the staffing. Like, this is where you, as the elected officials, can say, "Hey, it's important to us that even though these courses are less than 20 students." That's why the board created that policy back in 2011 so that, you know, as you're doing, it's important, if it's important for you us to keep the music program where we're at, that we should run the three music classes. If it's important to keep more than just Spanish offered at RB, then we should run the French class. That's where the board gets to vote on this, and that's where the board is deciding. That's why we brought so many of these to the board.
I think, I think we understand that. I mean, I think that's, I think this chart, the chart with the coding and type actually helps drive that home quite a bit.
And I think Lorraine had a good point where it, you know, the AP class is exemplary status, the intervention we have to provide, and then supporting our diversity and equity, the rest of those classes fall into that.
I mean, the lowest one here, I mean, if, you know, the seven is the Honors French, right? And so, the argument is next year, there's going to be French III individuals who are going to be coupled with whoever's in Honors French IV next year. That's still going to be a lower number because no one's going to start in French III. So, that's, that's going to continue... So that's, that's going to continually be a low.
Which, when we offer German, that's what happened in German.
Yeah, was it intended to be French III and Honors French III?
No, it's Honors French IV and AP.
Four and AP.
Yeah, four and AP, yeah, so that's a typo there. That's right, yeah. So that's why, you know, asking. But, you know, I look at, well, when I look at music, our music, we're asking for three additional classes, but yeah, our numbers of music have dropped considerably.
Well, they're pretty consistent.
We'll get to, I don't think they've dropped, I think they've held flat, that's why.
Held flat, but.
But again, their honor is under AP, so we need to recognize that we are a college high school.
Yeah, the AP Music Theory, this is a tier for to run, correct?
And the, yes.
Right, so I don't have a problem with that. We've been committed to that. When we brought this forward, it was, you know, there were a few classes, well, we look, we're doubled this year. I mean, we've never been, I mean, we've more than doubled how many of these classes we're asking for. And it was really to hold the line constant so that we could continue to offer what we do offer. I just, I think this is a little more than we would want to approve. That's my opinion.
So these numbers include all the reassignment of my napkin map of one hundred and fourteen students from the canceled classes. All of those have been reassigned into the numbers.
Correct.
And so we're already looking at those canceled classes as something that has been dropped, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot to say, what would you cancel? That's not the intent of what we're doing, but, you know, looking at it, the number seven is the lowest with a valid explanation as to why it continues to run. I personally don't have an issue with running these courses.
I don't have an issue with the French. And, you know, there was a typo there, it said French III. I don't have an issue with running Honors French IV, AP French because we've been committed to running pathways in the past.
Right, and again, I'm not asking you to say what course you're going to, you're going to propose, we don't approve.
Right.
But as I look at this, it all falls under what I would expect a high school with a diverse course offering to be able to offer.
And I can just add, the hope is, so a course like Foundations of Technology, so that's an entry-level class, there's quite a few spaces, that's a course that a transfer student, a freshman could enter, and we're going to have a number of transfer students. A course like Latin American History, that's a class that a transfer student could take. I guarantee you, we're going to need, have students that are going to transfer and that are going to need that pre-algebra class. That number will probably increase. We will definitely have students that will come in that will need Heritage Speakers I. So there will probably be, and that's that report that I provide in the fall, that shows the column, Fall Report, where you can see an increase of students, and again, we're always keeping track of.
And certain other classes, maybe that's a good segue to your next slide, because certain other classes do drop below the twenty as well in the fall.
So the next list are classes that are over twenty but are still under the cap, but many of them are very close. And again, these are singletons, so they're only running one time during the day. And as you look at this list, you're going to see, again, some of them are AP courses. I mean, calc BC, these students have been, you know, taking math, this is their, some of them are fourth year math, some of them, they're seniors, some of them are juniors. We're not going to not offer them their capstone math class. You'll see some applied arts classes, you're going to see a couple of intervention classes, you're going to see music classes. And again, the hope is that transfer students can fill some of these spots, but they are singletons, and so they will, these courses are scheduled first. Students always get these courses, and that's the good news, and, you know, it's keeping them in there. But where those few empty spots are, the hope is to fill them.
And as Dr. Skinkis explained earlier, like, the forty is for the larger class size where it's performance-based and...
Correct.
The twenty-five is more of an intervention class, and the thirty is just the standard, typical class due to...
Yes.
Equipment or support.
And then the next list are classes that are, again, singleton classes that are over the cap, which are, we don't have too many. And there were a couple of questions submitted by the board stating that there are three classes that are over the forty cap, and two of them are being co-taught, and will the third class that's over the cap at forty be co-taught? So we made a conscious effort to give all of the students music classes that were recommended by their music teacher, those classes, and so we are providing them the co-taught experience, and this was a way to maintain our music staffing. We will not be offering a co-taught opportunity for that Leaders Training class.
That's a PE class, correct?
Correct. That's Leaders Training. Those students will conflict out of the class just like they will with those other classes, and that's what, you know, happens in high schools when kids can't get everything that they want.
How long do students have to drop a class? You know, and I'm not looking at class particular, I'm just saying, that's just the way.
What, typically, I mean.
Do they, I mean, in college, that happens all the time, but in high school?
It happens all the time.
In the first two weeks, can they say, I don't really like this class, and they run out?
Yeah, I mean, things, circumstances happen where, you know.
They're in over their head, or it's not a good fit.
Things, yes, things will happen. There's a level change, the student changes their mind, they need a class, particular class for college admissions. Yeah, they changed their mind, they've taken on too much, they need a study hall. Typically, they like to clean all of that off within the first couple of weeks.
Take it a couple, a couple of weeks to.
Yeah, and I mean, really, they're dropping a class and adding a study hall because then it becomes very difficult to drop a class and then add a class. It becomes, because really, we are saving spots when we're building the schedule and we're looking at elective spots, we're keeping those spots for transfer students. That's what we're really hoping for.
Do we see students move from like an Honors or an AP down one? Do we see that kind of movement?
Sure, it happens. Yeah, it happens for, I wouldn't say it happens across the board where you have a student that was in all honors and AP, and then they drop them all, but it could maybe a couple. Sure. Where they're, they're just really overwhelmed.
Sure.
Any questions on this?
Can you touch on the honors, like, the history of honors and electives?
So I'm going to do that in the combined area.
Okay. Because I look at some of these, like, we're passing Honors Orchestra at seventy, you have Honors, or you have an orchestra at forty-five. If we had sixty-two, you run two classes at thirty, I mean, just trying to figure out.
But it's based on instructor recommendations too, right?
Correct. Yes. Are you talking about the history of the different levels?
Yeah.
Yes, I was going to talk about that.
That's fine. Okay, thank you.
So next, we have our, a list of our current combined classes. I think this was requested at a previous meeting, and you will see that we currently have nineteen combined classes in six departments: Applied Arts, English, Visual Arts, Wellness, World Language, and Special Education. And then there were some for that, and additionally, there were several other questions submitted by a board member.
Yeah, and the Fine Arts, I mean, there's really a vast, like, painting ceramics photo, I mean, it's almost the whole.
Visual.
The visual.
The visual arts, like, you're drawing ceramics, well, I don't think ceramics is visual, but yeah.
Yes.
But, so a student actually could grow or whatever, but do you have the whole spectrum almost within each class?
Yes.
Yes, and that was based on, it's always based on the number of requests that we receive and how we're going to combine the class. So a question was submitted, how do combined classes, you know, how do they work? And so our teachers are going to differentiate within the class, just as most of our teachers are differentiating in every class, because in any given subject, they're going to have a variety of learners, and so they're going to have to differentiate their instruction. So that's exactly what's happening within a combined class. The question was asked, are there co-teachers in these combined classes? No, none of these classes are currently being co-taught. And then the question was asked, when did RB start combining classes? And this is my twentieth year at RB, and we have been combining classes since I've been here. And Laura, I know you remember the AP pushed twenty-five, two thousand, two thousand and five, two thousand and six, and this is when high schools were really starting to push AP courses, including RB. And there was definitely concern from departments that did not have an AP offering, that students were going to really try to load their schedules with AP offerings, and this was going to hurt departments that did not have an AP offering. And so that led to the conversation of trying to create an Honors level in all of the departments that didn't have honors, so that students would not be impacted for taking four years of a Fine Arts class and be penalized for that. And that kind of began, that was the beginning of having an Honors Orchestra, and an Honors Band, Honors Jazz, Honors Magravols, and you probably remember that.
When you say penalized, you mean from a GPA perspective?
Yes, because people, students were looking to, you know, we were ranking, and there was, they were.
Because they're weighted.
Yeah, they were, yeah, they were trying to build the schedule that had the highest...
Paying for the buck.
Yeah, the highest GPA, and so if you were just taking classes that were not weighted, that was impacting you, and if you were, and so the idea of having an Honors level course was to not penalize the student that wanted to take four years of music class. And we were building honors into the wellness classes. We were building honors into the Applied Arts classes because they didn't have an AP offering at the time. And that was, the idea was to have the honors combined with the non-honors and teach at the same time.
Yes, and that was pertinent because of the ranking, but since the ranking has gone away, might it be time to start to look at some of these classes and reevaluate? Is the Honors level so qualitatively different that we have to have both levels?
Do we have kids drop music classes that have been a three-year choir student if they don't make magicals? Could that be hurting our numbers? Do we have kids that are in orchestra for three years, and they try out for Honors Orchestra, and they get assigned to regular orchestra that may drop orchestra if they don't get put into Honors Orchestra and not take it their fourth year? Is that something that could be hurting us?
Hurting, well, maybe.
Do you get, do you see kids drop because they didn't get placed in honors or didn't?
Yeah.
Have you seen that?
Joseph, you had something to add?
I don't have any exact numbers, but I know students typically within, at least band and orchestra that I've seen, after their, like, entry level, maybe like for band, because it's divided into three, after like a year in symphonic, they will audition for the higher ensemble, and then if they don't make it, they'll maintain through symphonic. So I don't see it necessarily.
Do we see some? Like, for, as we're trying to rebuild these programs, we don't want to lose any. That's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, it is. If you separate out levels by creating a, I don't know if it's a GPA factor, you're thinning out what otherwise would feed into courses.
A whole class, yeah.
And, I mean, I'm very familiar with it, and all of the trend of pushing toward that access to higher GPA, and there are schools that are going away from the Honors levels, understanding that students have the opportunity to work better together with diverse levels because they can drag each other along or lift each other up, or help in a lot of ways by getting rid of the tracking, so.
So is that, I mean, is the logical thought then, getting rid of the weighted for Honors and AP? I mean, that's what, because we don't need the Honors and AP weighting, so.
AP, AP is a different course.
The honors got brought in, the idea of keeping, keeping pace, and...
But if there's no reason to have a weighted course for any of it, I'm just saying, it's part of the same kind of academic discussion.
Right.
Yeah, so it'd be interesting to then bring it back to the department, you know, the department groups to say, are the two classes qualitatively different? I was even thinking about performance because many of the performance classes are based on audition, and, you know, so you have to audition and move up there. That's, that is a qualitative difference, you know, that's something that, you know, you're, you know, you're applying for.
I know, for an personal experience, my son was in the German for AP, and she told us at open house that, you know, she expects different things from the kids that are at the AP versus the kids that are at the four. So she, she gives them all the same assignment, but she has different rubrics for them because she expects the higher students to do more, so.
But then I say P, but what about regular honors?
Well, he, yeah, he was in the, whatever, four, three.
Well, I think ultimately, right, we, there's, you know, the elephant in the room is, there's certainly been some conversation about classes that some folks would like to split up because that would be nice to split them up, to be able to have that focus. And I can certainly promise you that Suzanne Zimmerman would love to split up ceramics because teaching a kid that's on Ceramics II and a kid that's on Ceramics IV takes a little bit because those are completely different skill sets. Madeline Dahl would love to have students who have never danced before and are in Dance I in their own section and be able to focus just on the Dance II. There are, there are all of these cases that I could go through where certainly it would, it would be nice, absolutely, if Patty Sarkady didn't have to teach two classes at the same time. But what we're talking about is trying to meet the needs of all of our students and be fiscally responsible at the same time, give our students offerings, and still be able to be fiscally responsible at the same time. When you see some of those honors situations, right, it was maybe not necessarily ever intended for the honors in the regular level to be in separate classes.
Right, because you think about Honors Clarion and Honors Rouser that are running at the same time, and that's an opportunity for students to take it multiple times, which we encourage that because usually the students that are receiving the honors credit, it's their...
Their leaders.
Third year, and they're the editors, they're the ones that are helping maybe a freshman or sophomore, bringing them along, they're the classroom leaders, they're able to, you know, kind of take charge of a group, so there's some responsibility into that. So you're, you're giving them credit.
But there's only still one yearbook.
Right.
And there's only still one newspaper.
So you would never want to split those classes up. You would only want to have those classes combined.
Yeah, so it might be a good, so it might open some more opportunities for us if there are some classes where we have a regular level and an honors level that aren't qualitative.
But is it fiscally responsible is the question.
Right, but where they could be combined, and then that might open up some other opportunities in the schedule instead of having to run two sections of them. But then only, that would be a discussion at the department, yeah.
Okay, now I am, I'm turning this back over to Kylie, you talked about some elective enrollment.
So the next chart in your packet provided in the report is the elective enrollment snapshot for Applied Arts, Music, and Visual Arts. This chart tracks the number of student requests for courses in each of these three areas as well as a historical FTE assigned to meet the requests and the FTE allocated for next year's requests. The board has seen this chart before, we've just added a little detail. We've added next year's course requests and FTE as well as included the content areas that fall within each subcategory. If you look at the numbers vertically, you will see that as one elective area sees more student requests, the other elective areas decline in requests. Since there's a finite amount of space in a student's schedule, students have to make choices about where to spend their elective time, which can create ebbs and flows in elective areas. And this speaks to Laura's point earlier, talking about the saturation of so many elective courses. We went through a few years in Leadership Council where we were routinely getting requests for those courses, knowing that there's only...
for those courses, knowing that there's only one pocket of students that we can pull from. On the next page, you're going to see the student requests translated into a bar graph in order to make it easier to visualize the changes in elective student requests and how those requests in one area can impact another area. As you see the green bar rising in requests for applied arts classes, you see the orange bar, the orange music bar and the purple visual arts bar either staying consistent or going down. As student requests funnel into one area, the other areas stay static or drop because all of the electives again are tapping into one overall student population. I also included the next chart, which is this exact same information in a trend line.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So in our applied arts, is this the area where we see the most dual credit or and/or the most opportunity that would lead into a certificate towards employment?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, that would speak to why we're kind of exploding in here is when we're talking opportunities for students to leave high school and have, you know, a certificate to start working if they wanted to.
We went from having one or two in the past couple of years to most of our applied arts courses carrying a dual credit in some capacity.
Yeah, I mean, that would speak to why we're really seeing amazing growth there.
So as I said, the next chart puts this information in a trend line, which kind of shows even more clearly these, how these growing requests can happen. As you look at the split in the green applied arts line and the purple visual arts line specifically, we have to ask ourselves as we're going through this, have visual arts been artificially inflated in recent years because we have had to turn away so many students in applied arts? As we have turned away students in applied arts, and I have that data in a coming chart, due to staffing limitations or space limitations, students have been placed in their second elective choices. That has typically been a course outside of the applied arts. And as I mentioned, this information is going to become clearer in this next chart. So if you flip to the applied arts enrollment and FTE detail, you can see each applied arts course and the number of student requests for those courses listed for the past five years. What I really want to direct your attention to is the yellow band under total enrollment, which is really, to me, the most telling part of this chart. This yellow band shows how many students we have had to turn away from applied arts courses in the last four school years. So for example, if you look at the 21-22 school year, you will see that there were 822 students enrolled in applied arts classes. But when we sectioned in February, there were 962 students who wanted applied arts courses. So we had to turn 140 students away and put them in their second elective, which could have funneled those students into, say, a visual arts class. Another example is in this current school year, we have 1,020 students enrolled in applied arts electives right now, but we originally had requests from 1,216 students. If we had had more space and more teachers, we would have had that number at 1,216.
So we're almost turning 200 students away in our applied arts, is there?
That was last year, for this year.
This year.
This year, it looks better.
That's a lot.
Mm-hmm.
So are we having conversation on developing these areas, trying to get staff in these areas?
Well, I think this year looks a lot different.
Yeah, so this year, the N A is representative of the fact that we were very fortunate in Patty Farley's last year. We were very fortunate to be able to, based on student requests, bring in another applied arts teacher who was a graduate in family and consumer science. Family and consumer science graduates, applied arts graduates in general are some of the rarest teachers to find. We've had applied arts classes that have been canceled mid-year because we had someone who had to quit to take care of a family obligation. We've had course requests for students that we've had to cancel before the year started because we couldn't hire in those areas. The request statewide for applied arts courses is growing at a pace that outweighs the number of students in college who are in the pipeline to go into that. So we have not been able to meet those requests because we couldn't find anyone to hire. We've had positions that have gone unfilled more than once since I arrived here.
So I'd like to interject if I may. I, again, appreciate these numbers, but I don't think they give us the full picture. I've asked for clearinghouse information twice now because that will ultimately give us the full picture of where our students are going, whether they're going into an applied arts curriculum or whether they're going into a college prep curriculum once they leave Riverside Brookfield. I got my response. Yep, I know it's not here, but that's a problem. The problem that we as a school, as a district, were not aware that we did not have access to clearinghouse data is a problem. I'll tell you why I think it's a problem. That data should be used in conjunction with all of this to give us the bigger picture. The fact that it took someone asking for clearinghouse data for us to figure out that, oops, we don't have it, I was surprised. How could that not have been possible? How did we not know back in October or November when clearinghouse data comes up or comes out? How did we not catch it then? Right? Like, we should have known then, like, oh crap, where's the clearinghouse data? That tells me that the post-secondary department here isn't really looking for it or isn't using it. Now, I understand why I wouldn't get last year's clearinghouse data, but when we had Naviance, where are those clearinghouse data reports? Right? So again, we might not have access to it now, but did we have access to it in prior years? And if so, how did we use that data to plan for these types of classes? I'll give you my own personal experience. My kid is taking a foods two class. I'm like, oh, I didn't know you were taking foods two. Are you going into culinary? Like, what are we doing? Do I need to go talk to Triton? Are you, are you excited? He's like, I just want to learn how to cook. I was like, okay. So again, we need to be careful, the story that we're creating with why students are choosing these classes. I think they might be choosing them because they're, they're fun. Because this is necessarily what they might want to go into.
I don't, yeah, sure. I don't necessarily, I think in a school that's based on student requests, whether they're going into the courses because they want to have fun, because it enriches them, because they're passionate about music or about foods or about RBTV, whether that's the reason or the life path after school is the reason, these are still the classes they want to take.
Which is why clearinghouse will give us a fuller, more complete picture, which is why I keep asking for.
What do we mean? Understand it though, what do you mean that? Because a kid can go to Triton and still get, be pursuing a business degree.
Correct.
Right, so then we further look at then, the transfer report, did those students that go to Triton then transfer into a four-year institution? Right? Are we trying?
But is that going to change what they want now?
Right.
No, not necessarily. But again, right?
I guess where I struggle with this.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna look at numbers and if we're gonna look at data, that's awesome, but let's look at all of the data points, not just this.
I guess where I struggle with the clearinghouse is once they leave RB, we lose all control of what happens to a student and why they may not continue or be successful. Because once they're admitted, right, so the admission, the focus of the student actually being admitted into, into the university, which we can see, we're tracking and, and then the follow-through of them actually going and getting admitted into that university and attending, the follow-through, there could be so many factors as to why they don't.
Absolutely. It's called summer melt and that's where our post-secondary department should, like, if we want to spend money during summer, let's spend money on summer melt work to ensure that our students are enrolling and that they are getting to their institution on that first day. I'm especially worried about this graduating class because FAFSA is a disaster. Right? So are they going to get to where they want to go? I'm not sure. Right? And what are we doing at the school level to ensure that with or without FAFSA, they get to where they want to go?
But some of the major studies show, we can find out where they matriculate freshman year, but without extensive tracking, we don't know if they graduate from their institutions, if they change their major, if they go on without tracking those individual students.
So I'm fully aware of post-secondary enrollment and post-secondary retention and success. I get that.
Right.
But as they leave us, we have the responsibility to ensure that they do in fact enroll. And that's where the clearinghouse.
A non-educator question here. You're referring to this clearinghouse report. Do we have any other data points that represent that same, here's where the class of 2024 is heading? Or is clearinghouse the only repository of that information?
Well, we have the students, they're self-reporting, but this is where they're, where they're going.
They're exit survey.
We have self-reporting, but the clearinghouse, so when we transition, so when we transitioned to school links from Naviance, this year, our number one priority was our seniors, which to ensure all of their data was correct on their transcripts, it was in, and then to try and ensure that all the counselors knew what they were navigating school links. So we are hopefully going to have this data in the next couple of weeks. That's our, that's all.
So clarified. This is, this is survey data or this is something other than survey data?
No, the, so our graduates from 2023 and 24, this clearinghouse now has the data file. We uploaded that.
But we don't keep that in any other location?
Well, we are, it makes more sense to now have it all housed in school links as opposed to pay through the clearinghouse. It makes more sense to keep it through, through school links.
I guess I'm intrigued by Ms. Gaskin's line of questioning in terms of how we use all different sources of information. And my perhaps assumption is that that data already exists just in a different format than maybe the formal clearinghouse report.
So very easy example, we've got our college and career fair coming up, right? How were those schools chosen? Were they chosen based on past enrollment of RB students? Do we know where the majority of our students from RB go once they leave RB?
Well, we know where they apply, yes.
But do we know where they end up?
We know where they apply and we also know what schools are willing to come to RB as well, so we have our connections with reps.
Because I saw the list and it's all private schools. So I told my kid, I'm like, well, we're not going to any of those because we can't afford it. So where are the state schools, right? So then luckily UIC is coming. But I would encourage us to, and I think I mentioned this last year as well, I would encourage us to invite the state schools.
We do.
And are they just not showing up?
We do, yeah, we invite them.
The, and the private schools are recruiting students.
Oh, absolutely, they are.
So it is a difference in what's happening. Now, I guess I'm trying to understand what, clearinghouse information's good, how does it backward drive our decisions on stepping and?
We're not talking about, we're talking about this, right? So begin with the end in mind, the end is where they end up once they leave here and let's backward plans to what we have to give them so that they could be successful once they leave the building. It's the way I've always done it when I worked with post-secondary enrollment. I don't know, I, again, right? I would be curious, right? As a parent, I'm curious to know where do they, where do they end up?
Well, and you could certainly ask, you know, we could ask those questions about, you know, some of our students who go all the way through our visual arts program or it's, it's certainly a much bigger question than just our kids. It feels like, I want to be careful to say, our kids, I do not believe that our kids are only taking our applied arts classes because they think it's going to get them college credit. That may or may not be transferable.
Well, because some of these college credits, let's be, let's be clear.
They just are taking it for the opportunity.
I think they just like the opportunities.
The college credits they got, don't transfer to a four-year.
In Illinois, they do. In Illinois, we just recently met.
The culinary class, the culinary class will transfer to UIC?
When we just met with our partners at Triton, one of the transition specialists from the Office of Transfer, Transfer Center, was there and he has been working with some of the dual enrollment kids, some of the dual credit kids. And he said that every phone call he's made with state schools in Illinois, they've been able to make those credits in some capacity, even if they're general education credits transfer, unless they're like in highly specialized school. Like if you were going to a, like if you were going to a culinary school, it might not work there. But we are seeing students who are at least getting those general education requirements being able to transfer them.
I could just add just two points of clarification. Public universities are here all the time. I mean, you guys can see them if you walk in, they visit us regularly. And without, and with the FAFSA question, our counselors are always encouraging to apply for scholarships, you know? And I mean, I don't know how many recommendation letters I fill down, so we are aware of the challenges, so that's why we're encouraging students to seek, you know, other, other sources of funds.
And schools are delaying there, that may one day, and more and more schools are changing it.
Yes, they are. But then our students will, anyway, that's a different conversation, so sorry. Thank you.
You know, with these numbers here, you know, we mentioned with the list of requests, you know, the classes under 20, that that was filling our diversity equity goal. But really, this gold band also shows an effort towards our diversity and equity goal because it, it is showing that we're opening up opportunities for students to make choice. And, you know, we had two lovely interviews from students who were in the law enforcement that were actually at Triton taking classes and really had tremendous testimony of how those classes were going.
They're both doing internships at the police departments right now.
Which is, yeah, so we wonder, are these classes leading to any kind, I mean, that, these are young people doing something that we never thought would be possible in high school, while you're still in high school. So I think the gold band shows an amazing amount of progress. It shows opportunities for students that we never had. And it's allowing students to go to college, pursue something very specific or go into a trade. And with the work that Bill's been doing with the unions and some, being in, going into the plumbers union, it's really opening up many doors. That's definitely.
Or finding out what they don't like. If I sat in a class about nursing, I might find out that like, whoa, I can't, I can't do that. That's, I need to not spend money in college on something that I don't like well enough to, to really pursue it.
There will not be a lower stakes time for a student to get, to find out where their interests lie. And so while I understand there is a push to make these driven toward a career path, there is also an understanding that we need to have them be able to experience and understand what careers may look like, what they're interested in, what the expectations may be. There's essential skills that come, that go outside of content and go into relationships and how they present themselves to communicate with others, communicate with superiors, communicate with subordinates and just do the things that we all expect, we used to call soft skills. But these courses offer that type of venture, so.
Absolutely, great.
And one of the things I noted on the chart where you are starting to see some FTE increase in applied arts, you really, for next year especially, you're seeing really an explosion in foods. And I, I will say that I do think, we have two newer foods teachers, they started a baking and pastry club this year and there's so many kids that wanted to come to the club, they had to turn away. They have to offer it most of the time. I do think a lot of our students are choosing classes that they think would be fun. We're seeing growth in, now, we saw it in foods because we had an extra person to teach it. Now we're starting to see the growth in construction and draft CAD, electronics tech. And I do think part of the reason is because we didn't have to turn those students away. We had a staff member who was able to get certified due to his industry credentials who now has multiplied David Weishaar's capacity. Because before, we only had one Mr. Weishaar. We still, you saw her tonight, we only have one Patty Sarkady. She's amazing, she's an award-winning teacher, but there are only so many classes in a day that we can teach through Patty Sarkady. So when more students than just her want those classes, we have to turn them away. And so that's where we're starting to see, I think, our capacity hasn't, has been multiplied through teachers and staffing. And so we aren't having to turn away 150, 200 kids from courses that were their first choice. Any questions on that applied arts detail before I move on?
That's great.
The next chart was included by request of a board, I believe, at a previous meeting so that we could take a closer look at student requests in foods courses specifically. In this chart, we have listed the four food courses we offer as well as the number of requests for each of those courses for this current school year and next school year, so you can see the change there. We've also included the number of students we were not able to accommodate for this current school year due to our space constraints. The board question, there was a board question, I believe, submitted with regard to the total number of students who have requested foods classes for next year and what FTE that looks like. So as you can see on this chart for 24-25, we have 515 student requests for foods. That represents 2.0 FTE. So we have next year slated two full-time foods teachers. With foods being a semester long, you take that 515 and you divide it in half, and that's 257 students approximately each semester. So the student-to-teacher ratio is about 128 kids for each of those teachers. To put that growth into perspective, this current year, we have a 1.4 in foods. So we had enough requests to justify. So we had enough requests to justify adding a 0.6 increase in foods. There was also a question, I think, last meeting regarding how many students stay in subsequent level foods courses to get to the higher levels, the dual credit offerings, or just kind of that top level. I've noted in the chart that our dual credit offerings have expanded in foods, where we have some that are currently implemented and some that are still pending. By 2025, the foods courses that we offer at RB in totality will be dual credit, with the exception of our Foods One where they will still earn a certificate. Along these same lines, the question has been raised about a drop-off in foods because we only see 16 students hanging out in that honors advanced food service section of the chart. I talked earlier about that really actually being a very exciting number because this current school year, we had three. So we're really growing there. But I want to try to answer that drop-off question that I mentioned simultaneously with another board question submitted, asking how the numbers translate from Foods One to subsequent courses. So it's important to note that students can go from Foods One to Foods Two, or they can go from Foods One directly into baking and pastry, based on the required prerequisites that we list in the curriculum guide. So when we look at the detail of this chart, you can see that this current school year, we had 212 students in Foods One. This is the third column of data. Then when you look at the numbers in Foods Two and baking and pastry for next year, which is the first column of data, you can see that there's 226 students that are looking to take an advanced foods level. So what you see there is that from year to year, the number of those students in the second level classes can be higher than the numbers in those introductor, introductory classes, and we would consider that growth in the program. We also have some students who maybe only had room for one of those classes during one year, and they're going to take a subsequent class in the following year. I will add also that there is often a slight drop from introductory classes to subsequent courses in a progression of a pathway. I mean, you saw it with the courses we're requesting under 20, with the number of students who go to an honors French four and an AP French. Students decide what they like, they decide what they want to focus on, what they want to pursue at higher levels. And so in many areas across the building, we're seeing that level two or level three numbers start to narrow that focus as those students really want to stick with the pursuit of a particular content. We do see the number of students continuing to the end of a pathway not really changing the number who are coming in. So we still need to address things like staffing and space so that we can continue to be a school that meets the requests of our students and we can run beyond the introductory levels. As I mentioned way earlier, starting with the class of 2027, pathway endorsements, you have to have those in high school. You have to have one by the class of 2027, and that number is going to continue to increase. So regardless of what they're going to do with it when they get beyond RB, we have to have those opportunities for those students in those pathways. If we don't offer the introductory classes or sort of the penultimate class at the end, then we have cut off that pathway and we don't get it approved. And so we're not in compliance then with the state.
Is that when the foreign language requirement also comes in?
Yes. Although they're still talking about that. They're trying to get it, they're trying to push back and push it into middle school. Lastly, I noted in this chart that we are, we will be next year, in the next year's curriculum guide, looking to rename our foods courses to culinary, just to keep in line with industry standards, to better capture what we're doing in those classes and be in alignment there.
Next chart, Kylie. Are we getting near the end of the chart?
You're fading, are you fading? It sounds eerie. Our next chart is the music enrollment and FTE detail for the past seven years. This is the chart a board has, the board has seen before as well, but I've added next year's numbers as well as some context and course ratios that I will walk through. As you can see in this chart, music class offerings are listed with the number of student requests for each. The total number of music requests is tracked at the bottom of the chart. Under the main chart with the course listings, you can see enrollment in music disaggregated to show numbers year over year in the three main music areas, choir, band, and orchestra. This chart shows the fluctuation in course requests for music over the last seven years, with 20, 19, 20, and 2021 showing the highest number of student requests for music. If you look at the total enrollment for 25, 24, 25 versus this current school year, 23, 24, you will see that next year, there are projected to be 362 students in music classes, which is about 10 more than there are in music classes this year. I think it's important to note, we are running AP Music Theory next year with 15, or we're requesting to run with 15. All 15 of those students are in other music courses in some capacity. In the purple outlined box, I have provided a look at the student-to-teacher ratio that has been a topic of conversation, and I teased it out for each semester. The reason that I teased this out into semester one and semester two is because we generally see a slight drop-off of students in semester two of bands specifically, which changes the student-to-teacher ratio. For example, when we co-taught symphonic band for this year, when we initially started, there were 44 students originally signed up, but that number dropped to 36 for semester two, which is under where we would typically co-teach a class.
Do the students go to a study hall then, second semester? Is that what they're doing?
No, they're taking a, a different class.
Under normal circumstances, yes, they would have to go to a study hall. The way our policy reads, the way our policy reads, if I'm a kid and I sign up for applied zoology, zoology is a year-long class. If I decide, which I never would, Mr. Monty's wonderful, if I decide part of the way through that class, you know what, applied zoology, not for me, and I drop it, I'm forced into a study hall. Our, in our music department, we have students that opt to take only a semester of a year-long course. But when we section for that, that's not, that doesn't come out in the numbers. So it comes out when it shakes out into, when Beth builds the master schedule, where do those students get placed? And oftentimes, if I'm being honest, we do see some students drop because we march for one season. So in that fall, any student that is in the marching band for the fall gets the PE waiver. And the PE waiver goes away semester two. So we've had students tell us they want to, they want to be in there so they can get that PE waiver, and then they want to be able to free up their schedule maybe in the second semester for something else. It's not a huge number, but when you're talking about 44 to 36, that's a point two of staffing.
Have we ever thought of offering band as a semester course? Because I mean, really, they, they are a little bit different. You march, you know, in the fall.
But they also, they only march through October, November, and the school year goes through December. So what do they do?
Now, we did Thanksgiving parades. I mean, you took it to almost the last two weeks. I mean.
I was just thinking, the second semester is different enough that maybe some students might take a different music class or might not just want to be in marching band, might want some other music. Have we ever considered making?
It's not a conversation we've had since I've been here.
Or you might pick up people who don't want to march.
Right.
Sure, who want to be in the second semester, sure.
Do they have different opportunities in the band setting in spring that they don't have in fall? That might be interesting.
We have a drum major on our board, I don't want to get his respect.
I, I, sorry. I, I do want to mention that during the first semester, students enrolled in band typically are required to be in a part of the marching band. But marching band is not the only thing done during the first semester of band classes. We still have our Halloween fall concert, and we start working on that music alongside our marching music. We actually start that towards the end of our second semester. So like, I'll, I'll see the field show music and the marching band music that next year's band and next year's drum majors will be working on as a senior who is about to graduate.
Do you see classmates that leave at the semester?
There are very, there is one person I can think of that takes it one semester because they thoroughly enjoy marching band, but concert band isn't something that they enjoy. It's, and I do also see the point where some people might not want to do marching, but they would be interested in concert, but that's not something I have seen.
And Beth, do you have trend numbers on that? You see some kids sign up for a semester, first semester, some sign up for a second semester?
I mean, if it was two semester classes, they could.
Who signs off on it to get out of one of the semesters?
We've had the music teacher say that it was fine for them to take one semester and not the entire year. In the curriculum guide, it's a year-long course.
So Mr. Baum has signed off on that for the band stuff?
It's the department.
Well, we've traditionally done it to preserve FTE.
Yeah, to allow them to have.
But it does, it does, does, I mean, does staffing ratio change from semester one to semester two?
Yeah, and there was a question submitted about why there's not ratios provided for next year, even though we have next year's numbers, and it is simply that. Beth, when people build the master schedule, it depends on where the classes fall and what those ratios look like. And in the notes section to the right of those ratios, I've included a sample student-to-teacher ratio from other classes with similar class caps in the building. So you can see, for example, how a social studies, a Spanish, or a wellness teacher at RB, how their kind of student load in a semester lines up with those in music. I, I know there's been some concerns brought with saying that the ratios are out of proportion, where a music teacher might have more students than others. So we just provided that comparison so you can see that. And then one addition to this chart was at the request of a board member. The blue box on the side is a snapshot of participation numbers for music extracurriculars. This is meant to capture the numbers of students participating in a cappella club and mariachi club. Table shows the number of participants for each club, as well as the number and percentage of those students who are also in a music class. So you can see on that chart that the majority of our students who are in those extracurricular music clubs are also in a music class in some capacity.
If you look at the mariachi, I mean, that's almost an FTE where students are not taking, you know, they're taking other classes and then they're participating in the.
But they're already in a music class.
I think, I think you're reading that wrong.
Yeah, there's only three.
About 23 kids, all 20 of them are already in another music.
There's just 13 new students.
Yeah, yeah, so I did read that wrong.
Are there questions on that?
Moving on.
Yeah.
So the last one is the visual.
So the last chart that I have provided is a five-year snapshot of enrollment in visual arts. This chart mirrors the charts I included for applied arts and music to show student requests for each of the visual arts classes, as well as the total enrollment or FTE assigned each year to meet those requests. In this chart, you see the ebbs and flows of visual arts requests that I described earlier. In the years where visual arts requests were up into the 600s, we were turning students away from applied arts classes at a pretty high rate. So for example, in 2021, 22, where there were 635 student requests in visual arts, we turned 140 students away from applied arts classes. In 22, 23, when there were 636 requests in visual arts, we turned 55 students away from applied arts classes. And this current school year, 23, 24, when there were 667 visual arts requests, we turned away 196 students in visual arts. So this is the trend that I was talking about. It illustrates, I think, pretty clearly what I mentioned earlier. Student requests drive our staffing. They drive, and they can shift elective departments based on trends and student preferences. So since we remain a school where we allow student requests to drive our staffing, you, when there are big swings like that, you're going to see that represented within the FTE in each department.
But we're not turning any students away in music though, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so they've not lost any, any students who's wanted to take a music class hasn't been turned away?
We, we had the Bulldog Buddy Choir that we were not able to run this year because there were only six, it's a 40 cap, and there were six students that wanted that course. I believe, if I'm right, and Beth will correct me, that five of those six students were already taking another music class of some capacity. And the one student that was not already in a music course was given, you know, that that student could take any class they wanted to. I believe they went to game design, maybe? With Miss Sarkady, that's what sticks out in my head. But five of those six students that wanted Bulldog Buddy Choir were already in a music. So there's, there's essentially one kid who wanted to take Bulldog Buddy Choir, didn't get it, but could have taken one of our other choirs.
So the, bring this all back, we've seen a lot of charts. It seems like visual arts and applied arts are the two that are kind of picking each other off a little bit.
Right now, yes.
Not have a direct impact on our music.
Correct.
Okay. The second thing I would say to the board, like, while I understand, you know, everybody's passion, like, with the, with the applause, like, if the, as a public school, if you're seeing a huge increase in career and tech ed courses, or construction courses, or culinary courses, whatever, I mean, as a public school, we're letting the students' interest drive the enrollment. We haven't seen a dip in the music numbers in the last three years. They've held kind of consistent. So I mean, I feel like, yes, 25, we've received several emails to the board, 25% of the students are enrolled in music. Those 25% of those students are still getting all their classes. The other 75 seem to be flipping over between applied arts and visual arts. And it's important for us as a public school to offer all of those. So that's why I would encourage you tonight, the 16 classes, while I know you feel that it may not be fiscally, totally fiscally responsible, I still think we are within our budget capacity to approve all 16 courses so that we're appeasing 100% of our students, not 25 or 75, but whatever students are picking, I think, you know, the finances are there to support all those classes. And there should be excitement that we're seeing growth in other areas. Those are areas, if you look at the historical data, we've turned a lot of kids away. We're not turning kids away, we're not turning kids away from any courses, regardless of what information has been shared or emailed or maybe misinterpreted. If you look at everything in front of you tonight, no one's being turned away from any courses, and we're trying to run all the courses. And I think as a public school, I think we are meeting our duty to that. We are serving all the needs of our students. So I would ask for your support in all 16 courses that are being brought to the board tonight. If, and if you don't, I understand that, but it is something on the timeline, we need to keep it, there are state obligations in regards to teacher contracts and some things like that, so it is a first and only read for the classes under 20.
But we're not, just looking at our agenda.
That will knock them up to later.
We're not doing it until new business, just so that we're, we're clear. Are there any other questions, though, for this team about the many graphs and tables? I know that there were a lot of requests that kept coming in.
I appreciate the detail.
I have one more comment, sorry. Against my better judgment, I will go ahead and say the following. In preparation for tonight's meeting, I researched like I was about to write my dissertation. I looked at the different reasons why we, as a small school, should allow for student voice, student choice, why as a small school, it's okay to support three full-time music teachers in our program. However, I didn't have to do all that research because tonight, two very important comments were made. One of them was student voice is very important. The other one was, this is where the board supports the staffing. So as we move into staffing discussions, further staffing discussions, because I don't anticipate this to be the last night that we talk about staffing, I would urge my fellow board members to keep those two comments in mind. This is where the board supports the staffing, could easily be translated into this is where the board supports the programs that are here. So yes, let's approve the classes that are under the cap, but then let's also consider, really, let's take the names out of the teaching positions, because I think that's where both sides, because we're polarized. That's where both sides have gone wrong, is we're attaching names instead of, let's look at it from a programmatic view. Let's look at the music as a music program, not as Miss Montana, not as the, Mr. Loeb, not as Mr. Baum, but let's look at it as a music program. Are we going to support the full staffing, the 3.0 staffing of a music program? Or are we just going to hold fast to those numbers and let our students just become a number? Because that's what it feels like. That's exactly what it's feeling like. I've voiced it to some of my fellow board members, this is not new to anybody, but I needed to just get that out there. So no more research for me, because I've got my two very important quotes that I think we should use moving forward. Thank you.
Yes, I just want to thank you for such thorough, all those charts, really very nicely done, and the work, Kylie, with all the classes and Beth, really tremendous, tremendous work over the years. And I can really attest, over all those years, you guys have really grown a nice program. It's really lovely.
Thanks, Lauren.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, that concludes Dr. Frey's test and the team's report at this point.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you. Beth?
Consent item. Consent items, Ms. Gessis.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on February 13th and 27th, 2024, open and close, varsity cheer, summer camp, overnight trip, IHSA membership for the 2024-2025 school year as presented in the March 12, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second, second from Ms. Locke, and we need a roll call.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gieska?
Yes.
Ms. Raska?
Yes.
Ms. Flah?
Yes.
Ms. Benhor?
Yes.
And Ms. Saber?
Yes. We have under life safety of the new culinary lab.
No updates.
Okay. And the Nadia contract at this point.
No updates.
Okay, thank you. New business, payment of bills. Were there any questions submitted from my colleagues?
I had no records of any bills, questions on bills.
Okay, minimum course enrollment approval.
But we got to approve the bills, though.
The Board of Education.
Thank you.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the payment of bills as presented in the March 12, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second, second from Ms. Locke, and we need a roll call.
Ms. Gieska?
Yes.
Ms. Raska?
Yes.
Flah?
Yes.
Mr. Benhor?
Yes.
Ms. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Saber?
Yes. We have the minimum course enrollment approval. There may be some more discussion from my colleagues on this one.
Is this a roll call?
This will be a roll call. We ready? Actually, it's not all in favor.
I, it could be a roll call.
But let's do it as a roll call tonight. Yeah, let's do it as a roll call. I agree.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves in accordance with District Policy 6:31, minimum course enrollment, the list of courses for the 2024-2025 school year with projected enrollment below 20 students, based on the current student enrollment data, as presented in the March 12, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second, we have a second from Ms. Locke, and we'll do discussion at this time.
Well, you know, I'll just, it's against every fiber of my body to want to approve that, because, you know, I lived through when we made this, when we made this policy. And I lived through the years we cut everything, and it took so long to bring it back. But out of respect for just the tremendous work that Beth and Kylie did, I will support them. I mean, they really went above and beyond and against, like I said, every fiber. I want to vote no, but I just, really, it's such a great job. So they'll get my support today.
Thank you. Any other comments on this discussion?
I think it's, all the numbers are reasonable with regard to running courses that students are selecting. I am in favor of giving those students the opportunity to take the courses. I don't have the moral objection to it in the first place, so I'll just voice my support to say that I think it's, in my opinion, not a hard decision to say that those courses should run.
Anyone else? Good. I think we can do a roll call, please.
Ms. Raska?
Yes.
Ms. Flah?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Benhor?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gieska?
Yes.
And Ms. Saber?
Yes. And then we do have a first read on the student handbook. I don't think we need to take any action on that this evening.
Correct.
We do have visitor statements. I know there's a lot of people that stayed for the meeting. Is anyone interested in commenting?
Hi. You will be, oh, my name's Liz Bushio. I live on Northwood. My son Ben is right behind me. I think you might be happy to know that I'm not going to read my whole letter that I sent you all today. I think you've all seen it. I think we've talked numbers ad nauseam. I will say that I believe setting class size based on room size is ludicrous. I realize that when this went into effect, it was years ago when there were financial issues with, with the school and everything. We have gotten back, we are running a huge surplus. So let's look at having reasonable class minimums out there. And I'm focusing on music, but I think this should apply to everything. But I'm focusing on music right now, like having band at maybe 25 as a minimum. And then we don't have to come to you and ask you to approve these courses and things like that. And splitting jazz and having jazz ensembles be like a true ensemble of 15 students each. You saw it in my letter. So it's all in there. These are just, you know, possible numbers, but really, class size based on a room size is crazy. So maybe let's look at revisiting that, maybe creating some policy that serves the class itself and the course material itself rather than just how big's the room. And I really think we should also look at expanding the FTE model, because again, we're running at a surplus. Do we have to go bare, bare bones, minimum number of teachers? Maybe let some of those classes that were 17, that Health and Wellness, I don't remember the name of it, the cap was, what, 40, but there were 17 kids? Why don't we run it? I mean, I'm not talking about being crazy, but maybe look at expanding things a little bit and letting a few more teachers in there, and let all the kids have all their classes, and let the music department have their three full-time. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Maggie White, Riverside Choir Theater and Water Polo Mom. Okay, I have a bunch of comments here. I'm not necessarily going to read. I do appreciate the conversation about looking at music programmatically. I feel like, you know, groups have come to this board for the last decade or so. When we started coming here last spring, facing the point two of our third teacher, we had a lovely meeting in late July, early August with the two of you. One of sort of the pieces of advice for us was, okay, you got to go, you know, bring enrollment up, go talk to the theater schools, et cetera. And I agree that that's a big part of our mission, and I had no problem saying, yeah, you're absolutely right. I feel like what I did leave unsaid was just the comment of, how can we work together with a go-forward plan, a proactive plan? I don't know when we've ever, or how long it's been since we've looked at, like, what is an appropriate music curriculum? What does that look like in the long term? How can we create something that scales as needed? Maybe interest goes down, but it seems like there is a lot of interest coming from behind. So we brought facts as to how other public schools do it, how they fully staff a music program. I guess my ask is, can we look at that programmatic approach? Can we understand what the best practice is? I'd love to get away from this, well, it's, you know, 30 here, 40 there, because it gets us into this exception game. If you have a music program and a curriculum that builds on itself, because music is a skill and technique that builds on itself, unlike, you know, a foods class, which can be, you know, kind of taken out of sequence. How do we get to a number, a class size, that reflects best practice? What is the right size of an ensemble? I don't know how you would, what jazz songs are even available for a 28-piece ensemble. So I would hope that there would be some kind of sit-down, a blue ribbon panel, a curriculum expert in music, to sort of figure out what is the right approach in this kind of piecemeal, this class is up, this class is down, is not sustainable. So I'm really hoping that, you know, some of the conversation tonight is a sign that we can sit down and really right-size the program. Thank you.
Hey, guys. Patrick Williams, I live in Brookfield. My daughter is a sophomore here at RB. I do want to reiterate what my other music parents were stating about the jazz band. The ratio that came up on the screen, I think it was 1 to 16 or 1 to 17, but next year, they're only going to have one teacher teaching the jazz band. There's 28 kids enrolled in it. That has never happened in jazz history. You could take 28 professional musicians, put them in one jazz ensemble. That would be highly unusual. It doesn't make sense. Two 15, two, two groups of 15 makes a lot more sense, even as far as just what you would be able to educate the kids in. If you've got that many kids and one teacher trying to bounce back and forth into two different rooms, that's crazy. I also have some questions about the Buddy Choir. We have heard conflicting information. We've heard from special ed teachers, multiple special ed teachers, that have told us that they were not able to offer those classes to their students. So I don't know where the information is getting crossed, but we're hearing different things than is being presented here. And I'd like to call that out and that to get investigated. I'd like to find out what's going on with that, because that doesn't make sense to us. Yeah, that's all I have to say for tonight.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Angela Ventura. You've seen me present for SA and other things. Speaking on the Buddy Choirs again, there was just now a French class with seven students approved, and a Buddy Choir has been left aside with six general education students signed up. And that's not even including prospective students in the Special Education Department that would be benefiting from that class. There was also mention of, sorry, of the idea of students taking a class for fun, and I think that's definitely something that plays into it, taking a class because they want to. For me, I was signed up for Bulldog Buddy Choir, and that's, one, a class that I was looking forward to take for fun, but also, I plan on going into the area of disability rights. I just committed for Communication and Disorder Sciences, because I want to work with students with disabilities, and that would have been an amazing opportunity for myself, so many others, to get to work with kids with disabilities and have that experience. I'm currently an adaptive PE as a gym leader, and having a second class that could have helped me with my major and getting to help these kids grow, because music is not only just a fun thing, it is scientifically proven to help students' mental health, and it's a form of communication. And we need to seriously consider this as a class, and it's, it benefits so many people, not just myself, who's looking to go into the field of special ed slash disability rights, but just people who want to enjoy themselves and giving these kids an outlet for their communication and having fun down at their school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gloria Bultcher, Riverside. I have students going through Riverside, like Central, Hauser, and at RB. I, what I'm worried about with the music department, so Hauser has got this amazing music program, phenomenal. The symphony kids are going to state. They won first place in our district. And I'm concerned that expectations will fall short when they get here. They're, they're building the kids up over there. They have, their, their concerts are full, not only on stage, but in the audience, community. It's, it's full. It's a full program. They're offering as an elective, you can take a class, how to play ukulele, piano, guitar. Packed. I mean, and these are just on the side. They have three teachers there. I, I just, I worry about it. I think we're, we're asking for, we're kind of begging on our knees for a, for the minimum, which would be three teachers, when we should be asking for the maximum. Our school can be up there with New Trera. We could be there with LT. We could be there with Hinsdale. These are, these kids are amazing. If you hear them play, they're like, if anyone heard the marimbas at the last concert, you heard Dr. Freitas. It was, it was amazing. They put that together themselves, I hear. I mean, just, if you heard George Gershwin, that's like, it wasn't dumbed down for high school kids. This was like top-notch. We're selling these kids short. And it's a shame, and I, I love the comment about maybe sitting with some, someone who can perhaps discuss what, I mean, what music department needs and means in terms of like, 28 kids in a jazz band, not so great. A chamber music ensemble, it's chamber music because it's meant for a chamber. If the class size, if the room size is too big, have them practice in here. Have them minimum eight kids practice in, practice in your office. You know, you just need a little bit. Let the class run. But we need to, we need to focus on these little, these things. Each musician is so unique. It's not like the Spanish teacher where she's teaching everyone Spanish. They're all at different levels of speaking Spanish, but they're all learning the same language. Horn player's not going to play the same thing a bass player's going to play. The drummer's not playing the same thing the flute player's going to play. There's different needs, and to, to expect one, one teacher, or two teachers, or even three teachers to fulfill those needs, it's asking a lot. I think I kind of, I'm just going to start talking myself in circles, so I'll stop there. Thank you very much. I really hope you vote in favor of this three full-time teachers. We need it. We should be setting our bar high. We're reaching, we're setting it low. And I think, I think we can, our kids can do it.
Hello, my name's Matt Rem from North Riverside. We got a daughter here who's a sophomore. Most of what I was going to say here has already been said, so I'll just skip a lot of it. But I'll talk to one thing. I mean, people have brought up the 40 people in a class, and actually, the last statement was exactly what I was going to say about. How many, what was there, a dozen different instruments that are being taught in a class of 35 students by one teacher? That makes no sense. With that said, what is the additional cost to fully fund the music department? What tiny percentage of the budget surplus would it actually take for three full-time employees? And the other question to ask is, how would that cost compare to searching for and onboarding a new teacher if the current one leaves? Because I can tell you, the other thing that I'm concerned about is the growing numbers of students at the middle school level. My daughter's a seventh grader right now. Kamara just announced the most number of kids they have ever had in their choir program. What happens when they get here? And you're at the minimum, or below the minimum. With that said, I want to, again, point out one of the things that Dr. Freitas said. Student voice is important. Is there another program in the history of RB that has had this many students, parents, community members speak at these meetings for a year straight? I've been to five of these meetings.
Four a year.
Many.
I've been here for one year. And in all five of these meetings, I've seen, you know, I counted it today, six, sorry, four students, five students now, and four parents and community members speaking for this program, asking for one thing, three full-time employees. It's not too much to ask. This is an easy decision. Look at it from a fiscal perspective if you have to, but that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Any additional comment? I appreciate everyone staying and having a second public comment. We had no additional discussion items. Any consideration of items for future meetings? Looking, Lorena, anything?
No.
Ready? Matters for closed session include appointment, employment compensation, disciplined performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, student discipline, individual student matters, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, enters closed session for the purpose of considering the closed session matters as presented in the March 12, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Do you have a second?
Second.
And we need a, all in favor. A roll call, excuse me. It's been a long day.
Ms. Flah?
Yes.
Mr. Benhor?
Yes.
Ms. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gieska?
Yes.
Ms. Raska?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. It is 10:09. We take 10 minutes?
Yep.